Alderman Harris. Alderman Beal. Alderman Zelaski Garza. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Cardness. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Scott. Alderman Tito Lopez. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Talafaro. Alderman Boyas. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Waggis Pack. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Vegas. Alderman Mitz. Alderman Spazado. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Riley. Alderman Smith. Alderman Tony. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Kappelman. Alderman Martin. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Haddon. Alderman Silverstein. Your Honor, we have a quorum present. Alderman Beal is present. Alderman Garza present.
Please rise. The Pledge of Allegiance will be recited by Alderman Gardner.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by Reverend Dr. Walter Turner III of New Spiritual Light Missionary Baptist Church. Reverend Turner?
Let us pray. Most gracious God, our Father, oh how excellent is your lane. We love you. We bless you. We thank you for allowing us to come into a brand-new year. Not only a brand-new year, but a brand-new decade where we have the opportunity to give greater service, greater opportunity to the people of the city of Chicago. We pray now, God, as this council begins to discuss the affairs that affect so many lives and so many communities. We pray that as we stand on the threshold of Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday, that we will have the spirit of compassion, that we will have the spirit of humility, and then we will always remember the song that if I can just help somebody, then my living will not be in vain. Continue to bless our leadership, our great mayor. We pray that you will continue to touch her and continue to give a fresh vision and a fresh voice from on high so that we can continue to do what is right by your people. It is in the name of Jesus Christ we pray.
Thank you.
Public comment?
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The time remaining for each speaker is shown on the clock on the wall. Pursuant to the Chicago City Council public comment process, time is not transferable to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be available for alderman review at the city clerk's desk. Please remember, this is a forum for public comments and not questions. The first speaker is Mr. Ronald Jackson.
Hold on one second. Ladies and gentlemen, during the public comment, I'd ask you to keep your personal conversations to a minimum so that we can be respectful for the people that are coming to speak to us. Thank you.
Good morning, City Council. Good morning, AKA members. You know, we are now in a new decade. Not only a new year, but a decade. Last decade, we had thousands of lives that were destroyed by people with issues, people that had serious issues. It's a shame that we started this year off by having someone that was staying in a Salvation Army shelter for two and a half days, asking for help, begging for help, and now, all of a sudden, that person throws a baby out of an 11-story window, stabs her grandfather, and kills her other child. Mental health is not something that we can continue just kick under the rug. We cannot keep talking about $92 million for malfeasance and misconduct and then throw $9 million towards mental health. I understand that you're about to vote on bringing on a new commissioner of health. I get that. I get that Alderman Kappelman wants to talk about how he has gone through over 50 years of dealing with a loss. I get that. But what I don't get is when the conversation about mental health continues to just roll along and the numbers and the names continue to mount up. When you add the name now Bernard Kirch, who was body slammed by a Chicago policeman, when you add the name of Tyrese Davis, who was tased on 79th and Marquette, and after they tased him the second time, they put three bullets into him. See, these are things that are really ripping off the city. Why? Because those aren't things that need to happen. You cannot have what's called a crisis intervention unless there are people that are actually trained in it. So what I'm asking this body now, and that is, let's start the decade off right. Let's look seriously at mental health. Let's look seriously at investing and not skirting the issue. Thank you. Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. The next speaker is Ms.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Sandy Schneller. 2020 has brought with it new laws and enforcement of rules that are of laws that are already on the books, and particularly the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP, affecting people between the ages of 18 and 49 who are able-bodied adults without dependents. The federal government is set to tighten the belt on work requirements as of April 1st on the current law, which has been in existence since 1996, for this particular group able to receive SNAP for a maximum of three months for a period of within the period of 36 months, unless they are working in school or in a training program for 80 hours per month. Now, 7% of the U.S. population is on SNAP in this particular category. That's 2.9 million people. 74% of them are not working. That's 2.1 million people in that category are not working, and that's largely affecting blacks, Latinos, and the LGBTQ communities. If we hone in on Illinois, 13.6% of Illinoisans receive SNAP. Illinois is the second-largest SNAP recipient state in the country. If we take that microscope and look a little bit further into Chicago, 45% of black males between the age of 20 and 24 are not working. That's 20% for the Latino male population, and only 5.7% for the white population for its male and female combined. What's wrong with that picture? We need programs in place that are workable, that are accessible and visible, and then we need these job training programs to have jobs at the end of that trail. We need other subsidies available as well for the people, such as transit credits or uniform stipends, because the last thing, ladies and gentlemen, that we want is a rash of disruption and a succession line back into the jail system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schneller. The next speaker is Mr.
(speaking Spanish). I exhort all of you to read the article entitled "600 Billion Dollars in Reparations from Venezuela and Iran to African-Americans." Register at reparationsbank.com. The National Reparations Referendum petition in Illinois, primarily for African-American descendants of chattel slavery, reads thus: "We, the undersigned registered voters in the state of Illinois, do hereby vote yes to this legally binding public option ballot initiative pursuant to the Real ID Act of 2005. In light of U.S. House Resolution 5404, an act to define the dollar as a fixed weight of gold, shall doctors licensed to practice medicine in the state of Illinois treat homelessness as a medical condition and thereby be allowed to prescribe decent housing as a remedy initially subsidized through Medicare/Medicaid and subsequently paid for via patients' collective treasury direct accounts credited onto their Real ID compliant electronic benefits transfer EBT debit card, standard formatted by Andrew C.M. Nelson and issued as universal basic income to infinity. Implementation of this shall request, require use of 5,000 metric tons of gold bullion sourced from Fort Knox Depository in the Federal Reserve Bank of New York, summarily print-mented into 5 billion Harriet Tubman $20-denominated 1-gram Army United States notes. $100 billion worth of this uniquely serial-numbered coinage shall then be deemed U.S. legal tender, held in escrow as collateral to securitize the aforementioned credit instrument for 20 to 25 years pursuant to point number four of what the Muslims want with dollar-gold parity set at 0.05 gram per U.S. In addition to the reparations act, I suggest we have a 10-year pilot project to credit an aggregate $100,000 upon over 10 years, $10,000 a year credited onto said EBT debit card.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. The next speaker is Ms.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and City Council. I would like to speak about the culture of change and progressiveness in the city of Chicago. I recently read where CHA gave $76 million to movie heads, I mean studio heads at CineSpace. Now, $76 million is a lot of money for an organization that is supposed to be helping the poor. Poverty is a billion-dollar business, but the poor, they're not being helped, they're not seeing any of it. When will change come to the small guy, the little guy? When will he be able to pull himself up by his bootstraps? When will he be able to have contracts, jobs, goods, and services? I was at a board meeting last month where a vendor actually applied for and received pre-development money. Now, pre-development money is where, from what I understood, you can basically play with the house's money. You don't have to have any money of your own, but when we went in here talking about cannabis, we were talking about how much money the people who applied had to have, but it seems like when you have money, you don't have to have money. You can play with the house's money. I want to know, when can we get in on that deal? When can the city play with the house's money? We want progressive change, and you can't keep doing the same thing and expecting a different result. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. The next speaker is Mr. The next speaker is Mr.
To the AKAs, you're still on the plantation. All that you have came from the white man. You're a consumer, you're not a producer. All of us blacks are on the same plantation. These black elected officials, they are not white elected officials. Go to their wards, see the plight, see the misery. We are a permanent underclass. We cannot continue to do the same thing. The miseducation of the black men, they never talk against sanctuary. Black people need sanctuary. Like the lady says, food, clothes, and jobs and contracts, you never get them. You didn't get nothing out of that marijuana. You white folks got all of it. There's no social justice here. Please realize who you are, where you are, and how you got here. When will you overcome? Just when will our people overcome? If Dr. King was here today, he would say institutional racism is still alive. Our schools, our schools, Brown Book versus the Board of Education, they're still not equal. It's still not equal. Who do you think you are? You come berated in here like you're somebody. In America, you're nobody. You're nobody. Black life doesn't matter or do not matter one of these words. You never read where a black policeman killed a white man or a white woman. It's not going to happen. My people, wake up. Stand up. Know who you are, know where you are, and please don't be like the little bird in the cage. He been in the cage so long, he opened that little cage. He won't fly. He won't, little black bear, won't fly because he was born in this hellhole. He thinks it's home. Don't do the same thing over and over again. Go back to your neighborhoods. Your neighborhoods are desolate. These people don't represent you. They represent the status quo. Wake up, black men. Stand up. Free yourself. Don't act, you have no ally. Free yourself! The ancestors don't like what you're doing. You forgot where you come from.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Blakemore. The next speaker is Mr.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Good morning. I said, "Good morning, everyone." Well, thank you. Thank you for responding. Mayor, you know, I'm always, under last administration, in here, I haven't been here, but I'm going to talk about the vacant and abandoned buildings and a moratorium. I hear a couple of aldermen put a moratorium together far as tearing down vacant and abandoned buildings in the 606 bike trail because of gentrification. We feel the same way on the South and West Side. Please, Mayor, look into it with the Housing Department. I go talk to the judge. The judge tell me it's the city. I talk to the city. The city tell me it's the judge. So, please, can this body put a moratorium together so they can stop tearing down our community so we can create some jobs, and maybe then this summer we can start saving some lives? Because these kids need an opportunity. I went to the meeting up north with Alderman Kappelman with these young men going and causing all this mayhem and disrespect and robbing folks on the train, and I've shared the same story. We need to keep the young man in the community by creating jobs, creating opportunity where they won't go out and commit these heinies and various crimes. So, Mayor, can we please look at that? Because I feel that once we do that, we will make a significant change. And do you think about this? The money that the city has spent by tearing down the property. I talked to one contractor. He bragged how he make $100,000 every month just tearing down buildings, and then they tearing down brick structures, great brick structures that we can save, but they leave the framed houses standing that's leaning to the side. I don't understand it, but if this body can please help put a moratorium on all demo across the city, and let's pass them to individuals who can rehab them. You know, I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but we have a great organization on the West Side, West Side Justice. You know, if we need to have a disinteresting party, you know, hold a property, that can, we can start there. I know they will love holding a property, and based on the person's income and ability to rehab the property and they finance, that's how many properties they should take and rehab, and we can create some jobs. Mr. Jason Irvin in your ward, Mr. Derek Curtis in your ward. So, thank you, guys, for this opportunity, and I look forward to continue fighting the fight, and just like the pastor, I'm just trying to save some lives. I want to make sure that we save some lives and get these young men a different outlook in life, and maybe then we can help them. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. The next speaker is Mr.
Okay, good morning. Later this morning, you're all going to take a vote to give the Gonitas family $1.2 million. I'm going to suggest that you reconsider and don't do it. Today, you can make a decision to finally send a message to law firms like Lowy &amp; Lowy, who have made a cottage industry out of blaming the police for everything that's wrong, suing them, making political donations to state attorneys in this city who then release people for unlawful convictions theoretically, and then allowing Lowy &amp; Lowy to sue the police department in the city yet again. It's a never-ending cycle. It needs to stop today. Just know, if you're an alderman with police and first responders in your ward, and you don't vote to reject this $1 million payout, you will be on notice. We will pay attention. Furthermore, there's a thing, there's a new study at the University of Chicago. It's called situational awareness or situational decision-making. It's a virtual reality trainer where you go and you decide, pretty much shoot or don't shoot. I suggest, before you keep making these decisions on what police may have may have done wrong, every single one of you, go through that training and see how quickly your life can change on a split-second decision. It's not as easy as you think, but many of you sitting here in judgment, every single time, the news media picks up a story that the police were wrong. Also, on the police front, again, almost coming up on three years with no contract, arbitration looming. I challenge you guys to take a vote, and women, put your money where your mouth is. Arbitration is binding on the police department, but not on the city. It will be brought to you if there's an arbitration ruling for a yes or no. Take a yes or no vote right now. Will you accept the arbitration ruling should it come in front of you as is with no changes? I think that's fair. The police department gets blamed for everything, for homicides, for how long now? But yet, do we get credit for the fact crime is down? Homicides are way down? I don't think so. Ms. Mayor, lastly, there's a pending FOP election coming up. Me and my team fully expect to win it and take office April 7th. I look forward to sitting down with you April 8th and starting a dialogue to see what we can come on common ground and get things accomplished going forward. Thanks for your time. Have a good day.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Katanzira. All speakers who have timely submitted witness lips for the public comment period have been
A resolution from Her Honor, the Mayor. Whereas since the end of December 2019, Puerto Rico has been devastated by hundreds of earthquakes that have caused businesses and cultural landmarks to crumble, forced thousands to flee their homes, and left millions without power. And whereas Puerto Rico is still reeling from the devastation wrought by Hurricanes Maria and Irma, the deadly storms that battered the island over two weeks in September 2017. And whereas, following a magnitude of 4.7 earthquake on December 28, 2019, the island has been repeatedly rocked by aftershocks and earthquakes, more than 500 of which have been of a magnitude of 2.0 or greater, and 30 of which have been at a magnitude of more than 4.0. And whereas, on Tuesday, January 7, 2020, the strongest earthquake in Puerto Rico in more than a century struck near Guayanilla on the island's southwest coast. This powerful earthquake killed one person and injured several others. And whereas, on Saturday, after days of strong tremors, a magnitude 5.9 earthquake rocked the island, causing landslides in the town of Puñuelas and further frightening residents who were still recovering from the Tuesday's earthquake. And whereas, Saturday's earthquake was followed on Monday by a magnitude 5.8 earthquake that leveled several homes along Puerto Rico's southwest coast, and on Tuesday, a dozen of smaller earthquakes within a few miles of each other. And whereas, more than 1,200 tremors of varying magnitudes have shaken this vulnerable region over the last three weeks. Thousands of people across several towns are sleeping in tents or under tarps or out in the open with no sense of when these terrifying quakes will stop. The Associated Press estimates the number of people left homeless by these series of quakes at nearly 5,000. And whereas, the residents of Guayanilla, Guanica, Yauco, and Ponce have been hardest hit. In five of the six most affected municipalities, preliminary damage estimates total over 460 million. And the United States Geological Survey has warned that residents of Puerto Rico should prepare for more aftershocks in the coming days, and has not ruled out the possibility that another earthquake of 6.4 magnitude or higher could hit the island. And whereas, Puerto Ricans continue to live in terror of when the next earthquake will strike, causing more injury, loss of life, and damage to homes and fragile infrastructures that has yet to fully recover from the last three years of devastation. And whereas, the devastation sustained by Puerto Rico has touched Chicagoans in a particularly strong and heartfelt way. Chicago's over 100,000 residents of Puerto Rican descent contribute greatly to the city's vibrancy and celebrate their culture, particularly along the Paseo Boricua, which is the only officially recognized Puerto Rican neighborhood in the country. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor and members of City Council of the city of Chicago, assembled this 15th day of January 2020, express our condolences to the people of Puerto Rico who have endured these devastating earthquakes, commend the resiliency and courage of the people who keep rebuilding their island, and offer our hopes and prayers in support of the communities that have recently that have been recently devastated. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the city of Chicago is directed to deliver a suitable copy of this resolution to the Honorable Wanda Vasquez Garcés, Governor of Puerto Rico, as a sign of our empathy and good wishes.
The chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move the temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration.
Madam President, I move the temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of the resolution.
There are no objections. So ordered. Chair recognizes Alderman Raboyos.
President, I too stand in support of this resolution. Madam President, 2017, Hurricane Maria devastated the island of Puerto Rico, causing massive floods, knocking out communications and power throughout the entire island. On this, on October 4th, 21 firefighters and one alderman left on a 10-day mission. And while accomplishing 48 missions during the 10 days, we reluctantly came home. And while reconstruction of the island is still going on, Puerto Rico was struck by a series of earthquakes in early January of 2020. Just last week's, thanks to Puerto Rican Agenda and the Executive Director Christina Pasiones Ayas, they brought together the Puerto Rican community to say enough is enough. Puerto Rico is not a third world country. Puerto Rico are U.S. citizens, and we should be treated as such. Puerto Rican people are very resilient, Madam President. Just yesterday morning, I called my 90-year-old aunt to ask her how she was doing, was she afraid? And she says, well, no, when I hear, when I hear a little rumbling on this side, I go to that corner. And if I hear another shake over there, I go to this corner. She's wonderful, and that's what I meant by resilient. To the leaders in Congress, when we go to war, the frontline soldiers are brown and black communities from this country. Puerto Rico is now in need. Send them temporary help, housing, and basic needs that they deserve. And in closing, Madam President, Nuestro Presidente Trump, Nuestro Presidente Trump, permanece públicamente en silencio sobre el terremoto de Puerto Rico. Y con eso yo digo, Puerto Rico se levanta. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Viejas.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand to be associated with this resolution as well and appreciate the fact that bringing attention to this, this crime that's occurring at the federal level, where we've had President Trump withhold funds in order to build or try to rebuild a wall to separate countries. I was just there in Puerto Rico over the holidays, and I can tell you that post Hurricane Maria, the island is coming back. There's a lot of terrorism, a lot of people coming back, but there's certain areas and rural areas in Puerto Rico that have still yet to recover. I'm happy that we have Congressman Chuy Garcia, who's been recently appointed to the Committee on Natural Resources, which is the committee that oversees the appropriations for Puerto Rico. And under his leadership there, I hope that he can move Congress to begin to help these U.S. citizens, these U.S. citizens that have given so much for this country. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning, members of the City Council. I too rise in support of this resolution. Our last term, when Maria hit, we became a city to accept climate refugees. It's a tradition that I think is strong in our city, but the work in Puerto Rico is far from over. And I rise today, as I'm reading what I just saw in my news feed, reported five minutes ago, that Puerto Rico was again hit with a 5.1 magnitude earthquake as we sit here and deliberate this resolution. It has to be incumbent upon all of us, not to just do resolutions, not to just send thoughts and prayers, but to do as our city did last month, Madam President, when the fire department gave Puerto Rico a refurbished and renewed ambulance and fire truck. We must continue to support with real items, real dollars, for the people, for the American citizens who are struggling and seem to be every day under constant natural attack. We must do that. We must continue to do that, and we must look at ways to expand that for the island, as well as for other countries and cities that we partner with and that are represented in this great city of Chicago. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardona.
Thank you, Madam President. This morning, I moved and rise to speak in support of this resolution. I am moved by the ongoing suffering over 3 million United States citizens or Americans recovering from the Hurricane Irma and Maria. Once in a lifetime, there are natural catastrophes, a catastrophe met indifference, prejudice, and hatred by the highest level of federal government. I am moved by the images of destroyed buildings, bridges, and roads. I am deeply moved by the images destroyed homes and the faces of the people suffering from PTSD resulting from the aftermath of two hurricanes and now sleeping in tents and parked cars in open spaces in fear of their homes to collapse on them. Seniors and those who are ill are suffering of lack of electricity and meds. The island has been shaking for months. There's ongoing tremors daily with the strongest earthquake in 100 years hitting it earlier this week. What was blown and washed away by Irma and Maria is being shaken in the ground. Several of my colleagues went to Puerto Rico and witnessed firsthand the devastation of post Maria. You went to major cities, countrysides, mountains, regions, and saw it firsthand. This morning, I am deeply moved and angered by the ongoing indifference toward American citizens, including the misinformation and lies about Puerto Ricans as people. Who are we? We are American citizens abandoned during the most difficult and recent history. Who are we? We are American citizens who are given our sons and daughters to shed the blood on behalf of this country. Who are we? Your colleagues on this floor, your neighbors, your friends, your sisters, and your brothers and your cousins. Today, I ask, I ask you to join me in the support of this resolution. I ask you to join in solidarity to call on the federal government to release the funds appropriate by Congress last year for the reconstruction of Puerto Rico. I ask you to join me in calling President Trump to stop the indifference and send additional funding necessary for the reconstruction of Puerto Rico. I ask you to join me and demand American citizens here and everywhere in the world must never be abandoned, but protected and supported. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. You know, this earthquake or earthquakes have hit the south and southwest parts of the island, the cities of Ponce, Yauco, Guayanilla, and Guanica. And even though these earthquakes have hit the south and southwest parts of the island, it has been felt through the entire island, only because the electricity has hit, was hit, and the infrastructure is so poor that there is no electricity anywhere in the island of Puerto Rico. Not just the south and southwest part, but the entire island. You know why? And there is no water. There is no water because we depend on electricity to be able to pump the waters into all parts of Puerto Rico. And the PTSD matter is real. I mean, the trauma that Maria caused among the people of Puerto Rico is being evidenced today by the thousands of people that are fearful of these earthquakes, and they're sleeping on the streets in the island. Some years ago, when El Salvador was hit by a huge earthquake, over 10 points, I was able to bring some funds that we raised in Chicago among the Latin American community, and I experienced a 9.5 earthquake while I was there. That was scary. That was scary, and I thought that I was a Mr. Macho. And so, I believe that this situation is so dire in need that the federal government only has to release $460 billion just to deal with the damages so far. FEMA has much more than that, and this president once again has given his back to the people of Puerto Rico. I hope that this resolution brings about more attention to this crisis that we are experiencing in Puerto Rico and that we can put the proper pressure to the federal government to release the funds that we need. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam Chair, President. I too rise in support of this resolution, and I am grateful for it. It's a little hard to talk about this, but there are some things that need to be said. Puerto Rico has endured some pretty horrible instances in the last few years, and Puerto Ricans have survived because they have organized themselves. When I was growing up, I grew up hearing over and over this narrative that if we were ever to be independent, that we would starve, that everything would fall apart, that we would have nothing. And the reality that we have lived since Hurricane Maria has been exactly that, except the people saved themselves because they came together, because they have been so resilient. But until when are we going to ask Puerto Ricans to be resilient? Until when are we going to ask them to save themselves? Every day? Puerto Rico has a massive debt that is illegal, but nobody's talking about that. Puerto Rico is not able to recover because there are vultures that are benefiting from the economic crisis in Puerto Rico because of our colonial status. There's a lot of things that we need to address. I am really grateful for this resolution, and I really hope that the funds that belong to Puerto Rico are finally released, but there is so much more that we need to do. 700 homes collapsed after these earthquakes, and the earthquakes continue. They have not stopped, not for a second. I get the notifications all the time, 3.2, 4.1, 4.6. It is, it is really horrible to see my country in that state. It is, it is really sad to know that there is not a lot that we can do because this is a natural situation, but we can do a lot of other things to prevent more damage and to restore, and I don't think that is being done. So, thank you, Madam President, for the resolution, and I hope that we can come together to find solutions to help Puerto Rico more.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Sutro Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I also want to echo my colleagues and thank you for raising this important issue, not only for Puerto Rico, but also for many, many of the thousands of residents here in the city of Chicago who have family members that are suffering not only the consequences of natural disasters, but the more, the most troubling thing, but they're suffering for the lack of support from the federal government. So, I want to thank you, Madam Chair, for taking upon this issue that is important to many Chicagoans also here. Also, want to maybe encourage City Council to look at other ways that we can support, like reinstating some of, or revamping some of their city sister city initiatives so that we can provide support to these cities that are in need, these brothers and sisters in other parts of our country, because they are also part of our country, and they need to be recognized and supported as such. So, I want to also thank you for that. I just came back from Mexico over the holidays and also saw how much suffering is across brothers and sisters' families who are here, Chicagoans, who see their families suffering. So, there may be a way not only to pressure the federal government to do the right thing, the humane thing to do, to support our brothers and sisters in other parts of the country, but also maybe there are ways for us to support the cities in need in Puerto Rico through sister city programs and other ways that we can support. So, thank you again, Madam Chair, for taking upon this issue, and thank you to my colleagues as well.
I also stand with the entire body of this council to speak on this resolution. I thought it was important for us to uplift the issue and the suffering that residents of Puerto Rico continue to suffer, having not fully recovered from the hurricanes of a few years back, and now suffering a series of significant earthquakes. Our hearts in Chicago go out to our brothers and sisters in Puerto Rico in the wake of the devastating earthquakes that have hit the island. And following the news of families and communities reeling from the continued damage from multiple earthquakes and tremors, we have also recognized and witnessed a remarkable resiliency. Alderman Raboyos spoke to that issue. It's one we know well here in Chicago. Just as we did in the aftermath of Hurricane Maria, this city stands ready to open our homes to fellow Americans, for those who need refuge and a place to stay as they rebuild their lives and their communities. It was then, too, that we saw Puerto Rico's determination for rebirth and renewal against all odds, and that mission continues today. But folks, we need to do more than express our sympathies. We need to act. I want to thank and acknowledge Congressman Chuy Garcia for his leadership in rallying local and state resources to assist those in need in Puerto Rico. We have started the process of mobilizing city resources and calling upon our private sector partners. What is needed, based upon my conversations with the mayor of San Juan, are tents, our hospital supplies, our basic needs of necessities of everyday living, like water, because that is in short supply as well. And we will be coordinating our efforts through the city of San Juan and the mayor there. To our Puerto Rican community on the island and here in Chicago, I want you to know that you are not forgotten, that you are our family and friends, and you can always count on us to stand by you. One other thing that I think is important, and some have alluded to this, we will add our voice to the chorus of, that is building in Washington, D.C., to force this administration to release the funds that were allocated by the Congress but yet have not seen their way to Puerto Rico to help them recover from the hurricanes and now are desperately needed in the wake of these earthquakes. We will do what we can to make sure that folks on the island are not forgotten. Thank you.
A resolution from Her Honor, the Mayor, and Alderman Coleman, Alderman Harrison, and Alderman Harris. Whereas Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated recognizes the First Greek Letters Sorority established by and for African-American women, is celebrating its 112th anniversary and Founder's Day on January 15, 2020. And whereas established in 1908 by a group of 16 students at Howard University in Washington, D.C., AKA has remained true to its basic tenets, to cultivate and encourage high scholastic and ethical standards, to promote unity and friendship among college women, to study and help alleviate problems facing girls and women in order to improve their social stature, to maintain a progressive interest in college life, and to be service to all mankind. And whereas, AKA serves through a membership of nearly 300,000 women and over 1,000 undergraduate and graduate chapters located across the United States and around the world. And whereas, Beta Chapter of AKA was chartered in 1913, and the second oldest chapter in the organization encompassing five Chicago-area schools, University of Chicago, Loyola University of Chicago, University of Illinois at Chicago, Columbia College of Chicago, and Roosevelt University. And whereas, Lorraine Richard Green, president of Beta Chapter and the graduate of University of Chicago, was elected and served as the second national president of AKA. During her administration, the Founder's Day celebration was initiated, the AKA Code of Arms was adopted, and the first issue of the Ivy Leaf magazine was published. And whereas, AKA is dedicated to implementing programs of service that enhance the socioeconomic and educational well-being of the local, national, and international communities, including through its signature program, which guides and supports students completing the college application enrollment process. And whereas, AKA's corporate headquarters, the Ivy Center, has been located in the Hyde Park neighborhood of Chicago since 1985 and was reopened in 2018 after an extensive redesign and modernization. And whereas, it's appropriate that the city of Chicago salute AKA for 112 years of exemplary leadership and scholastic achievement, civil engagement, and public service, and celebrate AKA's contributions to the city. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor and members of the City Council of the city of Chicago, assembled this 15th day of January 2020, do hereby recognize and congratulate Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated on the occasion of its Founder's Day and extend our sincere appreciation and best wishes for its continued success. And be it further resolved that suitable copies of this resolution be sent to representatives of Alpha Kappa Alpha of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated as a token of our esteem. That's it.
The Chair recognizes.
I don't know if she's still here, but I want to acknowledge our Lieutenant Governor, Juliana Stratton, was among the crew of AKAs who are here to celebrate City Council today.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Coleman.
Thank you, Madam President. And to this esteemed body, my colleagues, to my sororors, Alderman Michelle Harris and Alderman Leslie Harrison, to our central regional directors, Sonya Bowen, our international chaplain and past regional director, Soror Pamela Bates Porch, to my president, Patricia White Smith, and all of the wonderful women of the first and finest sorority. I say, "Chee!" You may be seated. On 11/3/2019, historic 176, was welcomed in two open arms of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. And on that day, I saw the light. I saw the acolyte, that pink and green reign supreme. You all, the mystery and mystique of Black Greek letter organizations, are storied and famed and renowned. But beyond the parties, the chants, the strolls, the colors, the pink and green, the pearls, because pretty girls do wear pretty girls, amen, soror. All right? Exits organizations with rich souls of service, sisterhood, friendship, and high ideals. As one of the newest members of not only City Council, but of Alpha Kappa Alpha, I understand this reality and living up to those high ideas of this organizations and the strength that our founder, oh, 112 years ago, I can only imagine being a young Black woman in the early 1900s achieving your higher degree and dreamed of supporting Black women, supporting women with black minded to uplift and use their God-given talents and strengths to the benefits of all, to serve all mankind. Just recently, in the 16th ward, we received national news of 13 shootings. But let me tell you national news about the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, that in one day, under the leadership of our international president, in one day, this organization raised $1 million for historically Black colleges and universities. That for 112 years, we have stood strong with nearly 300,000 members across the world. And not only has this organization made an impact across the world, but right here in Chicago, Madam President, I can't thank you enough. You are the first to bring in and paint the halls pink and green in this esteemed body and this building. So, as of today, thank you to my colleagues. Oh, Alpha Kappa Alpha, dear Alpha Kappa Alpha, hearts that are loyal and hearts that are true, by merit and culture, we strive and we do things that are worthwhile and we will do them with a smile. We help each other, for we know there's no other like our sisterhood. Come on, Soror Marva. And let the church say amen. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
I'm going to yield because my sister in the 5th ward has been here a little longer than I, so I'm going to yield my time and then I'm going to come, if I could, Madam President, if I could come back and speak after her.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Harrison.
Okay, I'm going to take that as a sisterly compliment. Yes, I am the oldest of the AKAs on the City Council. I will own that one. But actually, I went over for 11/1981. And that's, yeah, woo.
Some of us were born then.
Thank you, Madam President. I am proud to have been a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated for 39 As we have had this countdown to Founder's Day, I must stand here today on this January 15, 2020, and say, "We're ready. We're always ready. Whenever we get together, whenever we come together, we move mountains. That's what we do, that's who we are. We are excellent personified. That is us. I am so proud to be a member. Congratulations, Happy Founder's Day sororors, and I am so happy to have you here in these chambers today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution and I want to thank our baby in the City Council for bringing us all together and making this happen. Alderman Coleman, it couldn't have happened without you. I want to send a big shout out. Today, the members of Alpha Kappa Alpha give thanks for our founders, who we pay homage to. There would be no us without them. And so, we have to remember where we came from, that we came from humble beginnings, but we have never faltered as an organization of women in doing what we're supposed to do. It's always been about service and scholarship and giving back to a community that needs us. So, I really want, as I stand here, to say, "I could always do more" and I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the lovely women of Lambda Mu Omega.
We few, but we here.
But I want to say that we've got to do more. And the pink and green is proud. We fly that flag and all of us aren't ashamed of it, no matter where we are, because we're a fabulous organization of women. We are highly skilled and highly trained. We are educated women. So, we know what to do. But I want us as an organization to take it a little higher and step it up a little higher and make sure that here in Chicago, that as we talk about violence, we start to look at the women in our organizations of Alpha Kappa Alpha and say, "Hey, guys, we got the answer." Because women can move mountains. Women can change the world. Pink and green can change the universe. So, today, I'm humbled. I want to thank everybody who took the time off your job to come and be with us today and to allow us to celebrate the legacy of Alpha Kappa Alpha that will go on not just for today, but forever, only because we strive and we do the right thing. Thank you, women of AKA. I am so proud to be one of y'all.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand to be associated with this resolution. I should have wore pink and green today. At least I could fake it out. But I can say that, may not have on the colors, but I've been associated with so many AKAs who have not just embraced myself, but so many of the girls that I represent out in the 34th. When we were doing for Julian and Finger High School and I needed dresses for them for prom date, I could call on an AKA. They got a lot of them in their closets. So, for them to have donated and not being an AKA, but just to help a young lady along the way, I want to thank each and every one of you all, because you all have been the force in a young lady's life and we're grateful for that. For all of the ones that I do know, and I won't start calling out any names because somebody else will say, "Carrie, you need to call my name." But I love each and every one of you all because you do give back. Education is the key with you all. You want higher learning for young ladies and young men, because if you don't have a qualified young man for a young lady to marry, who will they marry? So, for that comes from you all, that you instill in young adults, not just in girls, but in the young men as well. So, for the men that are here, participate, because even though we move mountains, we need you all to push behind us. Because we stand up for those that are in need. As Alderman Coleman has said, $1 million is not something to sneeze at when you're talking about raising funds to help somebody. I'm grateful to Alderman Raboyos for, and you also, Madam Mayor, for bringing a resolution for Puerto Rico. Because I had an opportunity to go when it was in 2017. But when you can give back to a people, then your living truly have not been in vain. So, for you all ladies, congratulations on 112 years. But for what you give back to this society will never be forgotten. Congratulations.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise as well to be associated with this resolution. And truthfully, on behalf of Black Chicago, want to thank the women of Alpha Kappa Alpha for their service. And it's not just on the South Side of Chicago. There are many members that reside and live on the West Side of Chicago and have been very active in helping our young women in elementary schools throughout our city. So, we just wanted to say, "Thank you for your service. Thank you for what you are doing and what you will continue to do going forward and God bless you."
The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam President. For a minute there, I thought I was going to be only male acknowledging the AKA. So, thank you, Jason. It is with great admiration and respect that I rise to support this resolution. The ladies of Alpha Kappa Alpha have a very special place in my heart, from grammar school all the way through college and even on the City Council, where I take counsel from, more so from Michelle than Leslie, you guys should understand. But every influential woman that has had an impact on my life has been an AKA. So, I want to say congratulations. As a member of the Divine Nine through Way of Omega Psi Phi, Grandin State University, I had to stand up and acknowledge you and I have to have a special acknowledgement. Chairman, I'm with you, can't say everybody, but it's some AKAs in this room that are very special to me and I want to acknowledge them at this time. I have my childhood friend, brand new AKA Cynthia Coleman, who was Stephanie Coleman's line sister. I have Sherri Nichols Sweat, Kristen Nichols Austin, Marva Nichols, my Grandin State University family, and my friend, my confidant, I love her to death, Dr. Regina Potter. Thank you and congratulations.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Sawyer.
Thank you, President. And I too rise in support of this resolution. I'd be remiss if I did not stand up on behalf of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, because it truly is a pretty day today. But I really had to stand up. I know a great deal of you are here in the audience today, Valeta and all the ones in the box and everyone in the audience, but I'm here in support of my mother, who is a 60-year-plus member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. And I just want to say thank you for all of what you do in the community, all what you do on behalf of upcoming younger Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority members and just in college in general. I've always been a big supporter. I'm there every year on behalf of Theta Omega at the events and I'm always a financial supporter. And again, thank you for what you do. You do a great job and you all are resplendent in your pink and green. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too rise in support of this resolution. First, I'd like to thank all of the ladies in pink and green that are here today and congratulate you on 112 years. But I want to stand because my wife is an AKA. She is not able to be here today. She is actually very sick. But on her behalf, I want to thank all the lovely ladies and all that you do. I know about your sisterhood and how much you mean to her and how much you mean to each other and that cannot be replaced. So, thank you very much for 112 years. Thank you, Madam President.
I also stand with this entire body in support of this resolution. AKA started with 16 young women at Howard over a century ago. Today, it boasts a membership nearly the size of the city of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, represented in 1,000 schools across the country and around the world. And one of the first steps the ladies of AKA took in their grocerney was opening a Beta Chapter right here in Chicago, its second oldest in 1913, which today is present on campuses of Loyola, UIC, Columbia, and my own alma mater, the University of Chicago. Through it all, they've had their core values, which we should all aspire to, high academics and ethical standards, unity and friendship, and helping ease the challenges facing girls and young women in society. It's a legacy we congratulate and honor today and will continue to celebrate in the years to come. Congratulations and thank you.
A resolution from our honor, the mayor, and Alderman Moore and Alderman Harris. Whereas the members of the chamber were deeply saddened to learn of the death on November 27, 2019, at age 94 of the Reverend Dr. Clay Evans, a Baptist pastor, gospel singer, and civil rights leader who founded Fellowship Missionary Baptist Church in Chicago. And whereas Clay Evans was born on June 23, 1925, in Bronzeville, Tennessee, to Henry Clay and Stan Lee Evans, after moving to Chicago in 1945, Reverend Evans attended seminary school at Chicago Baptist Institute. He later attended the Northern Baptist Theological Seminary in the University of Chicago Divinity School. Whereas Clay Evans was ordained at Baptist minister in 1950 and founded Fellowship Missionary Baptist Church in September of that year, with five other members in 1959. The church moved to its current location in Fuller Park. And whereas after 50 years of dedicated service, Clay Evans retired as pastor of Fellowship Missionary Baptist Church in 2000. Following his retirement, Reverend Evans continued to hold an active schedule of ministry and participation in community events. And whereas- Religious Connection, and helped to develop and lead Concerned Clergy for a Better Chicago and the National Baptist Convention USA Inc., among other organizations. And whereas Clay Evans is responsible for launching the ministerial careers of over 90 people, including the Reverend Mother Consuela York, the first woman to ordain in the Baptist denomination in Chicago. And whereas Clay Evans was successful gospel artist, having recorded over 30 musical projects, often working in collaboration with the Choir of Fellowship Missionary Baptist Church, led by Sister Lou Della Evans Reed. And whereas Clay Evans entrusted his archive to the Chicago Public Library's Herald Washington Library Center, so that all Chicagoans can appreciate his rich legacy of pastoral leadership at Fellowship Missionary Baptist Church, his engagement with civil rights movement, and his television, radio, and musical work. And whereas a renowned faith leader, civil rights pioneer, and gospel legend, Clay Evans will always be remembered for his indelible impact on the city of Chicago and is a mentor and friend to many. And whereas Clay Evans is survived by countless friends and fellowship members, his beloved wife of 73 years, Luther Mae Hollingshed, together they had five children, nine grandchildren, three great-grandchildren, one great-great-grandchild, and raised a nephew as their own. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor and members of the city council of the city of Chicago, assembled this 15th Day of January 2020 to hereby honor the life and memory of the Reverend Dr. Clay Evans. And be it further resolved that suitable copies of this resolution be presented to the family of the Reverend Dr. Clay Evans as a token of our honor, gratitude, and utmost respect.
Chair recognizes Alderman Allen. Mayor Lightfoot, Madam President, and fellow Aldermen, I stand today in support of this resolution honoring the life of Dr. Reverend Clay Evans, the influential leader of Fellowship Missionary Baptist Church in the Third Ward. What a man, what a legacy, and what an impact. His life's impact extends across many fields and demographics. He impacted the music industry with his writing and singing of gospel music. From his pen, we received timeless, encouraging gospel music like "By and By," "He'll Be There," and "I've Got a Testimony." As a vocalist, he used his resounding and unforgettable voice to sing the hymns of the church into our ears and ultimately etch those lyrics onto our hearts. Even further, he impacted our country as a civil rights activist, and he impacted our community as a public servant. All of that while making his mark on the local and national Christian community with his prophetic preaching and humble shepherding of the Lord's people. Yet it was from his pulpit that he led one of the most significant and impactful ministries in this city and in our country. The Fellowship Missionary Baptist Church remains a visible and viable faith community in my ward and in our city because of the enduring foundation of service and advocacy that was laid and passed down by Reverend Evans to Reverend Charles Jenkins, and now to Reverend Reginald Sharp Jr. I believe his life will continue to impact us beyond the grave. His sermons will continue to motivate us to trust God, because truly, it is no secret what God can do. His example will continue to inspire us to speak up for the needy. His legacy will call upon us to commit to caring for others in word and in deed. Thank you again, Mayor Lightfoot, for this opportunity to honor one of my ward's most influential leaders, Reverend Dr. Clay Evans, upon his passing. And I want to thank each of the members of the Evans family for sharing his tremendous gifts with all of us. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. To the family, I want to say on a real personal level, thank you to you. Thank you for allowing me to be a part of your family and not, you didn't even know it. That when you walk in that door at the Evans house, it was no strangers, it was no "who are you?" But it was everybody's welcome. So thank you for allowing him to have that freedom to be able to have a conversation with people. Now, to me, I know he bigger than life, you know? I can't even begin to describe what that feels like and looks like for me, and I think that history is going to continue to tell all the good deeds that Reverend Evans did. But to me, he was like a grandfather figure. It's all spoken. You know how grandparents are different with their grandkids? They don't often reprimand them the same kind of way they do their kids. So when you come in, if he was gonna whoop you, he was gonna do it with love. And at least you knew that when you left the room after you got your butt beat, that he loved you, and that he had to do this, and he had to say it. And I think those are the things that are gonna always be so special for me, is the little things like that that I'll always remember, how he embraced everybody. And I say, everybody is gonna get up behind me, and they gonna say the same thing, because you never in his presence, and he didn't make you feel special. And so I think that's such a unique gift. I think that he, the embodiment of peace and kindness and godliness is Reverend Evans. And so I say to you that I am so blessed just to have a piece of him in my life, and I forever appreciate you. And I want to say to the family again, that thank you for sharing him with Chicago, United States, and the world. That is such a difficult feat, to know that your daddy, your grandfather, your great-grandfather, your brother, he don't belong to you, that he belongs to everybody else. And so I think what a wonderful legacy that is to say that he belongs to the world. Thank you. I'll continue to pray for you, as it's never easy to lose anybody. So for somebody who's sat in your seat, I'll be praying with you. God bless you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President. First of all, to the family, we are so blessed to have had Pastor Evans in our lives. You know, I'm a member of First Baptist Congregational Church with Dr. Arthur Griffin, who ordained me as a deacon. And he always tells the story, he always used to tell the story about how, when they didn't want Dr. Martin Luther King to come to the city of Chicago and speak, there was only a few of them, you could count them on one hand, who stood up against the administration, the police, and everyone else, and allowed Dr. Martin Luther King to come and speak at their churches. And at that time, they were threatened. They were threatened with a lot of things at that time, that they couldn't do a lot of things with their churches if they were to do that. But they believed in God, and they stood up for what was right, and God led them in the right direction, and they let King come and speak at their churches. Reverend Evans was one who showed that undeniable belief in God, that if you stand with God, things will be okay. And after he was done standing up, all of a sudden, he became the darling of everyone in politics, because he stood up and he did the right thing. And through that and from that, he was able to help so many African-Americans to get jobs in private industry, in government, and promote so many people, I mean, so many people owe their success for them and their children, the pastor and Reverend Clay Evans. I don't want to take too much from the deacon over there, but he was such a great man. And you know, and I tell you, you know, when you see him, especially as he got older, and when you see him and you talk to him, you would think that, you know, maybe he don't remember me, or maybe, man, that dude knew everything. He knew everybody who knew everything, and he reflect on things that you do, and he would talk to you, and when he talked to you, you know, you felt like he just blessed you. You know, you just literally felt like he blessed you. He was such a good man. He really helped this city. He really helped to promote African-Americans in government and private industry. He helped so many people to turn their lives around from drugs and alcohol and crime, and get on the right feet, and now wear suits and ties, and own homes, and have children in college. Thank you all for sharing him with us. God bless you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I too rise, or to be recognized and associated with this resolution. Dr. Clay Evans were someone who I met as I was being appointed Alderman back in 2000. I would tell you that Dr. Evans, not knowing him, his words spoken to me, live with me today. Take care of people, and the people will take care of you. Those are words that we should all remember. He was one who you could feel his spirit. He's just not a human being. He was one of God's child walking this earth among this city, state, and the nation. So he leaves his legacy, his legacy is left, is left within us to continue. So to the family, may God bless you, may you continue to remember all the good that he gave to us, and that we can continue to bless others. Thank you on behalf of the 37 ward and all those residents, and who could not be here today to wish you all well. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, many words, great words have been spoken about the great Reverend Dr. Clay Evans. As a member of Mount Vernon Missionary Baptist Church, we have fellowshiped with, with fellowship, that's an interesting play on words. But again, the legacy and what he meant, not only to my pastor, Reverend Dr. Johnny L. Miller, and just to the community at large, what he means to Chicago, and as a giant amongst giants, is a great loss to our community. As he, you know, as Alderman Burnett said, as he aged, you thought he may not remember certain things, but he was as sharp and as clear in my conversations that I had with him at our church. And again, let us not forget the legacy and the things that he has done, and remember to embody them as we move our generations forward. I mean, he's just laid the foundation for such greatness, and that churches will continue to thrive on forever. And the decision that he made, and it's something that you don't find in the Baptist church and the Black community, to pass that torch on to somebody else, who actually happened to be a member of our church that became pastor of fellowship. So again, the great leadership and what he has taught and what he's laid for, has laid a foundation for us also. God bless you all in your time of bereavement, but this is just a great man, and he deserves the recognition that he's been given today. Thank you, and God bless you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to be associated with this resolution as well. Listening to my colleagues, I can almost echo some of the same words that they've stated, especially like Alderman Mitz. When I first was appointed by Mayor Daley, he had a reception, and Pastor Evans and Bishop Brazier was at this reception, and I come flouncing in. And Reverend Evans says, "Girl, I know you." And I was nervous now. I said, "Yes, sir." "You're Lemuel's wife, aren't you?" I was like, "How in the world would he know me from Lemuel, when I've never met him before?" So at any rate, he says, "Well, you had a good husband, and he did good things, blah, blah, blah." I said, "Yes, sir." So he says that, "Help the people, and you won't go wrong." Then he turned around and said, which is what I say today always, "Then your living will not have been in vain." And I could sing that song over and over and over, because it reminds me of him, of what this responsibility is as an Alderman. We are public servants, so help the people along the way, and your living truly will not have been in vain. We've had opportunities, I guess we all gonna announce where our churches are from, we have had opportunities to fellowship with fellowship, because my pastor is the illustrious Donald L. Parsons. And I'm grateful for that relationship with Pastor Parsons, Pastor Evans, and with Reverend Jackson, because at the time, my pastor was a part of the ministry. But to glean, to, when I say glean, you gotta pick up little nuggets of what the gospel stands for in the Black community. And I'm just grateful that I had an opportunity to sit at the feet of such great men as Pastor Evans and Bishop Brazier. Thank you so very much, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Coleman.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to be associated in support of this resolution. To the matriarch of this family, Mama Lou Della Evans Reed. And this entire family, after the texts and the accolades, there is still no secret what God can do. What he's done for others, he'll do the same for you with his arms wide open. I could hear the spirit of Reverend Evans right now, and even feeling Deacon David Moore over here. Just the fact that when I first ran, or was even interested, some five years ago, I went to the house, Michelle, and Reverend went in that cabinet and laid that oil on me, and I ain't been the same since. But I'm a member of both Reverend David Coleman New Mount Sinai and Archbishop Lucius Hall, who's my mother's Archbishop. And when Reverend gave not only Black gospel, but the Black church a platform in the Broadcast Ministers Alliance, that is still going forth in his legacy, I just thank God for this man, and thank God for you. The Spirit was never born, therefore, the Spirit will never die. It's a friendship. It's a kinship. It's a relationship. And God bless you all. We have you, we love you, and thank you for being that ongoing spirit of Reverend Dr. Clay Evans.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. When I asked the mayor to do this resolution, she said, "Let's hold off to next year to get a family some time." And that was so thoughtful of you, Mayor. But I'm not even sure if she knew why she was doing it on this day that is so apropos, that is Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday. And what an honor to honor a man who walked with a man in this city, who has done so much for this entire country. Stephanie, it is no secret what God can do. And I'm just thankful that we can come here. We have, Mama Lou Della has been recognized, and whenever you saw Reverend Evans, you saw Mama Lou, because without the preaching, you also had the singing, and that's what made fellowship. And others talked about giving the family, the family giving up their father, their grandfather, and in her absence, his wife, I want you all to keep on the prayers, Mrs. Luther Mae Evans, because she gave up a lot as a wife for us to share Reverend Evans with this family. As I said in my remarks in the homecoming of Reverend Evans, I told people I would not be Alderman today if it wasn't for Reverend Evans. And that just wasn't talk, that's real. Because I did not move without his advice, and without his wisdom, and without his guidance. I want to thank this entire family again for sharing him with us. We have his sisters here with us, his brother could not make it, his nephews are here. As I said in my remarks in the homecoming of Reverend Evans, I told people I would not be Alderman today if it wasn't for Reverend Evans. And that just wasn't talk. That's real. Because I did not move without his advice and without his wisdom and without his guidance. I want to thank this entire family again for sharing him with us. We have his sisters here with us, his brother could not make it, his nephews are here. I just want to thank all of you all. It was mentioned that he was the first man to ordain a female Baptist minister. Don't take that lightly, you all. As we're dealing with issues here in this council that are not comfortable with people, trust me, it wasn't comfortable to ordain a female minister back then in a Baptist church. And Reverend Evans did that. It wasn't comfortable for him to stand with Dr. King in the midst of building a church and having the powers to be, to say, "If you stand with him and let him speak at your church, that building will not get built." But I say, what manner of a man is that? That regardless, he stood by his faith and he said, "No, my God will supply all of my needs." And that he did. What manner of a man is this that could put a Rami Emanuel, Jesse Jackson, and a Miss Fairconn all in the same room at the same time on doing something positive? What manner of man is this? That after those powers to be stopped him, he would come back and support the son against all people, sometimes people even in his own community? I remember a story, one person said, "Every pastor north of Forty-seventh Street needed to be shot for supporting Richard M. Daley." But Reverend Evans stood with him because he believed in his principles. Because what he taught me, Alderman Burke, when I questioned him one time when I was a young man, "Why are you friends with Alderman Burke and Rodoliate? Because of what they did to hell." He said, "Moore, let me tell you something. Don't allow anyone to choose your friends for you." And Mayor, I learned that lesson even when I was supporting you and that helped me because when people came at me, I said, "I don't allow anybody to choose my friends for me." And that made it easy because when Reverend Evans stood and he stood on his principles, he was elevated. And when you stand on your principles, man can't elevate you, but God will. As Alderman Burnett said, he fought for contracts, for us, jobs. He got so many people hired, African Americans, Latinos, others in this city. He fought for what you all, the least of those, the least of those. And he taught us about, we have to rise above isms, racism, sexism, denominationalism, partyism. He taught us, Madam President, that we can disagree without being disagreeable. I am just so happy and although I'm suffering a huge loss with this family, as we honor him, I want us to remember, when a soldier falls or a police officer falls, the protocol is always to take care of their family. And I'm asking this city, no matter what, this Evans family need, you take care of this family. Thank you so much.
I also stand with the entire body of this council to speak on this resolution. I'm sorry. Oh, Alderman Burke.
Madam President, ladies and gentlemen, I can't allow this opportunity to pass without acknowledging my friendship with Reverend Evans and the Evans family. Alderman Dow, it is in the third ward now, the church that he so ably led. But when he began, it was in the fourteenth ward. He was my friend, he was a friend of my father. When I was elected in nineteen sixty-nine, the church was in the fourteenth ward. He was my friend and he's been my friend for over a half a century. I became friendly with members of his family and I can't be here today without being reminded of his late son-in-law, Dr. Pi. Such a wonderful man and taken too soon from this world. Indeed, Dr. Evans was a legend, a Chicago legend, a Illinois legend, a American legend in his own time. It was my privilege to have been summoned to his home a number of months ago when his health was declining. He was bedridden, but when I was able to speak with him there, I was so impressed with his mind. His mind was as sharp as it ever was and it was such a blessing, Alderman Moore, to be there in his presence. When you're in his presence, there was a certain aura, was there not? You could tell he was a holy and a good man. I thank God for the friendship that he has shown to the Burke family for two generations. May he rest in peace and his memory will be a consolation to those who loved him and respected him. Thank you, Madam President.
I join this body in speaking on behalf of this resolution and supporting it, and I want to acknowledge and thank the family who is here with us today. As you've heard, Reverend Dr. Clay Evans was a towering figure among Chicago's faith and civic leaders and a stalwart in our city. Over the course of his incredible five-decade career leading the Fellowship Missionary Baptist Church, Reverend Evans tirelessly sought to uplift the lives of his parishioners and fellow residents through service and support. He joined the fight for civil rights alongside figures like Dr. Martin Luther King, whose birthday it is today, and Reverend Jesse Lewis Jackson. And as we have heard, he helped launch the ministerial career of the first woman to be ordained in the Baptist denomination here in Chicago. But it's through his music where Reverend Evans made his biggest impact, touching the hearts and souls of millions across the country and around the world through his stirring art and power of praise. Little did I know that as a child, I was taught and sang the beautiful music of a man that I only came to know and understand the majesty of his work when I came here to Chicago. It's the gospel he led that gifted us, lifted us when we needed healing and it was there when we needed strength. As Reverend Evans would often say, "It is no secret what God can do." And his life and his legacy is proof of that very thing. If you've been to his church, you also know that Reverend Evans left an enduring legacy there as well. Our prayers and thanks are with Reverend Evans' family, his friends, and the entire Chicago faith community in honoring this towering figure and great man. Thank you. Please remain standing.
I move adoption of the resolution by a rising vote.
Members, please remain standing for the vote. Madam Clerk, our final resolution of the day.
A resolution from her Honor the Mayor. Whereas on January fifth, twenty twenty, a sold-out audience at CIBC Theater in downtown Chicago took to their feet with thunderous
Madam Clerk, can we have one moment? Okay, if we can begin again.
Whereas on January fifth, twenty twenty, a sold-out audience at CIBC Theater in downtown Chicago took to their feet with thunderous ovations for leader actor Miguel Cervantes and the superb cast of Hamilton as the final curtain fell on the most successful Broadway musical in Chicago's history. And whereas Lin-Manuel Miranda's award-winning musical Hamilton is a story of revolutionary firebrand and founding father Alexander Hamilton, an illegitimate orphan raised in the West Indies who immigrated to New York, served as George Washington's aide in the Continental Army, co-authored the Federalist Papers, founded the Bank of New York, led the Federalist Party, and became the first Treasury Secretary of the United States. And whereas featuring a hugely diverse cast and a score that blends hip-hop, jazz, R&B, blues, pop, and rap music in most unprecedented way, Hamilton opened in Chicago on September twenty-seventh, twenty sixteen, and immediately captured the imagination of Chicagoans. More people have seen Hamilton in Chicago than in any other city, including New York. And whereas during its remarkable, remarkable hundred-and-seventy-one-week run in Chicago, Hamilton was performed one thousand three hundred and forty-one times at sold-out shows attended by more than two-point-six million people. A wildly successful musical, Hamilton generated four-hundred-million in ticket sales at the box office and contributed two-hundred-and-fifty-million annually to the local economy. And whereas thanks to the Hamilton Education Program, a partnership of Hamilton, the Gilder Lehman Institute of American History, and the Rockefeller Foundation, more than thirty-one-thousand Chicago public school students attended Hamilton after benefiting from a special curriculum on U.S. history and the founding era that was integrated into participating CPS classrooms across the city. And whereas during their stay in Chicago, the generous cast of Hamilton raised over one million dollars for Broadway Cares, Equity Fight, AIDS, a non-for-profit organization that raises funds for AIDS-related causes across the United States, supported several local service agencies, and participated in many civic and community events. And whereas lead actor Miguel Cervantes, who brilliantly played the role of Alexander Hamilton and his wife Kelly embraced Chicago as their new home as a result of their tireless efforts inspired by the death from a neurogenerative disorder of their beloved three-year-old daughter Adalide, more than one million has been raised for Chicago-based Citizens United for Research and Epilepsy Cure. And whereas in the closing monologue of Hamilton as Alexander Hamilton is bracing for death on the wrong end of Aaron Burr's pistol, he remarks in his parting lines, "What is legacy? It's planting seeds in a garden you never get to see." And whereas an appreciation of this great American musical and its enduring legacy is a vibrant celebration of our nation and its values of diversity, unity, tolerance, optimism, Mayor Lori E. Lightfoot proclaimed January fifth, twenty twenty, to be Hamilton Day in Chicago. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor and members of the City Council of the City of Chicago, assembled this fifteenth day of January twenty twenty, do hereby congratulate and applaud Lin-Manuel Miranda for his hit music Hamilton, Miguel Cervantes for his stellar performance in the title role, and the entire cast of Hamilton for their many contributions to our great city and for their genius in bringing life to the memory of the legacy of founding father Alexander Hamilton for all Chicagoans to better understand. And be it further resolved that a suitable copy of this resolution be presented to Mr. Miguel Cervantes as a token of our appreciation and esteem.
Forgive me, I'm fanboying pretty hard here for my guy Miguel. You know, Broadway has played such an important role in our country's artistic values and our artistic presence and for generations Latinos and African Americans have been played in these leading roles by others. And not only did we flip the script here, did Lin-Manuel Miranda flip the script here and you, Miguel, flip the script here, we had African Americans, Latinos playing founding fathers of this country, right? But not only that, we did it in hip-hop, right? I just can't say enough about this piece of art, my favorite piece of art out of any medium. My wife and I have gone to see the play here in Chicago a number of times. We actually won the lottery once and got front row seats.
Hand for hand.
Miguel, would you sing a song? But I'd like to sum up, many in my community who really identify with you in a role that's so important to our country's history, but even what you represent as an actor, what Lin has represented as a person who's gotten so much acclamation, particularly from the President of the United States on down, you are an inspiration, my brother. Lin is an inspiration to us all and I'm proud to say that I am fanboying right now. Thank you, brother.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too rise in support of this resolution. So I am not a big musical fan. So when I see the Disney shows and I have to take my kids to see the Disney shows and they start singing, it just kind of drives me crazy. And I just, I can't do it. However, going to see Hamilton, my wife kicking and screaming, she wanted to see it. I said, "I don't like musicals. I am not going." It is one of the best pieces of art that I have ever been a part of and I have seen it three times since. And just the way that you infused history and the culture of hip-hop is almost mind-blowing to me. And to hear my daughter going around the house singing songs from Hamilton, knowing the words and kind of knowing history at the same time, it is just amazing. And so I applaud you and the work that you have done, not only in the work of Hamilton, but what you have done in the care of your daughter. And I've seen your story and I appreciate the work that you guys continue to do on behalf of your daughter. And so, Madam President, I appreciate you having them here. I am also a fan now because of seeing this work. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Smith.
Thank you. I got a selfie in the elevator. So as a member of the fan club and also, it's so special that you and the rest of the cast were so successful here in Chicago. As you know, we Chicagoans take our theater very seriously. We consider ourselves, we do consider ourselves the preeminent theater town in the country where so much great theater is born. And to have your show be here for such a long run makes us very proud. Theater should be accessible to everybody and everybody can be a founding father and everybody, everybody can aspire to be on the stage. So I know that we're laying an awful lot of responsibility on this show, both to be a way of transmitting history in a way that's accessible to so many people, to what is surely the groundbreaking way that the show was cast. And I know that it has changed the theater in this country forever, as much as some of the groundbreaking people of the past, as much as, you know, Showboat was the first big musical and Rodgers and Hammerstein changed Chicago, changed theater forever. And we are so proud that your particular portrayal of the role was so fantastic. I also saw it several times and we will, we will miss you. So congratulations on your next stop, which I understand is back to Broadway to keep performing. So thank you so much, sir.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would be remiss if I allowed only Mike Rodriguez and some of the other members to mention the hip-hop community here. Being a member myself, it's nice to have another rapper in the room. But in all seriousness, I'd like to echo what my colleague has said, but really as a member of the hip-hop community, to be able to see the example that Hamilton has shown as to what can be done with our art form and our culture. I think a lot of times, there's been a lot of connotations to what hip-hop music has been and to see the ability to express so much, to really open up history and theater and art form to so many and truly change our society is something that I commend Miguel for being a part of as a lead actor now, Lin-Manuel Miranda for putting it together. And really just the impact is something that I cannot something that I cannot overestimate or really give a proper credence. So thank you for everything you do, and thank you for making me feel a little bit less alone as a rapper here. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Nugent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to rise up in support of this resolution. It has been a personal privilege and a highlight for me to have experienced this show three times, and also I was able to see this with each of my children, who are going to be so excited when they hear who mom got to meet today. This show, and specifically this Chicago cast, has brought a love and a greater appreciation of theater, music, and Hamilton himself to the city of Chicago, and I think that is just so incredible, and so thank you. I'm so proud to say that I got to be in the room where it happened three times. I would like to wish you the best of luck in your next endeavor, of course, to the cast and crew, and to you and your wife and your family. What a thrill to be on this ride with you in Chicago. And, you know, looking back, do we think Lin-Manuel Miranda knew in 2009, when he was workshopping this in the Obama White House, how much it would change the course of theater? So thank you, and thank you, Madam President, for introducing this resolution.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Harrison.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the City Council, I too rise in support of this resolution. Hamilton was actually the last theater that I took my mother to before she passed. It was one of the things, and I treated her and three of her friends, spent my life savings, of course, but... And I just want to share a little story. She was an educator, and we had dinner across the street, and she choked on her martini, and they had to call 911, and they wanted to take her out, and she said, "No. She was not going. She was going to see Hamilton. She would not go with the ambulance," and she had a fabulous time. So it was enjoyable, but nothing could keep her from it, and I was just proud to be a part of that. I loved the show, and congratulations.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I mean, about three years ago, a little bit more than that, Lin-Manuel came to the Puerto Rican National Museum in Humboldt Park. I had the opportunity of meeting him, and I took my middle son, Robert II, with me, and he took a picture with him. A few months later, all my three children and I, we went to watch the show. I have to tell you, I was so inspired, I mean, when I, like, when I hear hip-hop musical, I mean, I'm not too excited about that, right? And so, but I was so inspired in the way that the production was made, and I did not become a fan of hip-hop, but my middle son did become a fan of hip-hop. And today, as a freshman, he's taking a hip-hop class at Lantech, and he has already produced a few pieces, and they're beautiful, beautiful pieces. And I have to tell you that after we left the theater watching the show, you spent a lot of money, not only on the tickets, but you buy the shirts and books and all that stuff. So they bought the books of the music. My middle son learned every, every, every single piece that was printed in that book. It's amazing, and still today, he knows the lyrics of that music. So congratulations, I'm so proud to be called Puerto Rican because it was a Puerto Rican that produced that verse in New York. I have to tell you a little story about Lin-Manuel, Madam President, maybe you know this. You know Jose Sanchez, the CEO of Norwegian American Hospital? He was very close to Lin-Manuel's dad when he was growing up in New York. And Jose tells me that Lin-Manuel used to stay at his home, sleepovers, every other weekend at his home. So that has close, you know, Jose Sanchez is to Lin-Manuel, and to me, that was a natural connection, although the only experience I had with him was just to take a picture. So thank you for your production, and I'm so proud that you guys were here so long. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Vegas.
Madam President, I stand to be associated with this resolution. Just earlier today, we passed a resolution talking about Puerto Rico, and I can tell you that Lin-Manuel Miranda, with his success, has been a big supporter of the issues plaguing Puerto Rico post-Maria. And Michael Scott, I had that same scenario where I was dragging a kick into this show, and I'm glad that I went. It was such a great show that I was able to take my mom as well to see the show. So just want to wish you congratulations and much success moving forward, Miguel. And I hope that there's a sequel to this play, so thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
I too joined this resolution, and congratulations, Miguel, on all of your success and so proud of you, and on your loss of a delighted, such a painful, I have a two-year-old and a half, so I can only imagine your love and your dedication to your wife Kelly and also your son. But we wish you the best. We love you here in Chicago for your work. Keep doing the work you're doing. I read your bio, and you're doing tremendous work. So young, 42-years-old, and happy belated birthday, by the way.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I stand in support of this resolution. I just want to thank you for the inspiration that you have given so many people in the city of Chicago. I had the opportunity to see the show. I was so inspired. You inspire people of all age groups, every generation, from the grandparents to the grandkids to the parents, I mean, everyone enjoy your show. But most of all, I want to thank you as a board member with the gentleman sitting over there with you. I want to thank you for the tourism that you have brought to the city of Chicago. So many people have come to the city of Chicago just to see your show, from all over the country, probably all over the world. And those tickets aren't cheap, but at the same time, not only did they spend the money to buy the tickets, but they spent money to ride in cabs, stay in hotels, buy food, you know, go shopping. We just want to thank you for what you have done for the city of Chicago. God bless you. Dios de bendiga.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Wegasback.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I know it's been a difficult year for Miguel and Kelly Cervantes with the passing of their daughter, but when I look at what work you've done outside of your role in the theater, it is pretty incredible to spend so much time with you, the cast, and your colleagues working to raise over $1 million to find a cure for AIDS, over $1 million to find a cure for epilepsy, which some of us understand, who have family members that have epilepsy, we know what you go through and what you went through. And I pass on my condolences for the difficult work that you had there. But I think with this new year, with this new decade, all the success that you've had on the stage with your fellow cast members, with the producers, with the artistic directors, the people who put the set together, when you're sitting there watching this fantastic production, we all know that, and we all wish you the best in this new decade as you move forward on taking your artistic experience, the gifts that you have, each one of you, and sharing it with the world as you move forward. Thank you very much.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Chairman, I too want to thank you very much, and as my colleague Alderman Burnett said, I want to thank you first for the money. You brought in a lot of people from around the Midwest to come to Chicago, see Chicago in a different way, that went to restaurants, hotels, and that helped us. Our sports teams are having a little bit of a rough go, so many people enjoyed the show, and I'm one of those folks. I will tell you, as a father, you made history cool to a lot of people. I also want to say how thankful we are that you opened the arms of Chicago public school kids. 31,000 students saw this performance, and I really believe that that's a lasting legacy of this show and your work. Some of those kids are going to get on a stage, and they're going to be inspired, and they may be nervous to do it, but they saw the performance, they were inspired. Those kids got on a stage, they'll be on a stage, or they'll be doing something in life, and, you know, that's something to really take with the work that you did, that it goes beyond the end of the show, but it'll have a lasting impact with young people in our city, and for that, we are very grateful. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Burke.
Madam President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'd like to join in acknowledging this resolution, and as Alderman Nugent reminds us of those lyrics in the show, "The Room Where It Happens." This is the room where it happened, where the resurgence of theater life in Chicago was born. Lou Razin, who is here today with Miguel and Kelly, is really the father of legitimate theater in Chicago. And as Alderman Burnett points out, those added benefits that Chicago has acquired because of this vibrant theater scene in Chicago are due in no small measure to the vision that Lou Razin had when there were a lot of people doubting that this could succeed in Chicago. But the proof is in the pudding, is it not? What a thriving, vital part of Chicago theater is now, and only enhanced by the cast of Hamilton, the remarkable talent of Miguel, who now, as others pointed out, is off to New York to star in the New York production. Chicago's life, losses, New York's gain. But I also know a little bit about their commitment, Kelly and Miguel's commitment to Chicago and to their neighborhood. My daughter Sarah and her family are neighbors and friends of Kelly and Miguel, who are so highly regarded and held in such great esteem in their neighborhood and at their local school. The resolution also points out that their daughter Adelaide went home to God here in Chicago, and only those of us who've lost a child can fully appreciate the grief that they have suffered through. But what a remarkable tribute it is, is it not, that they could channel that grief, that sorrow, that desperation into helping others who are battling the terrible disease of epilepsy. I know that all of us and all the people of Chicago whom we speak for are the better for you being our neighbors. May God continue to bless you and keep you in your new life in New York, and please don't be strangers to Chicago. The Room Where It Happens will always be open to you and to your family. God bless.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Thank you very much. Really pleased and honored to stand in honor of this resolution. When Hamilton came out, I feel like it was the first musical in about 20 years that really touched my life, because I don't think something runs for 170 weeks because the Treasury Administration is cool, or because history has been made fun. I think there's something remarkably universal in the themes of loss and ambition and moment, and I think it's particularly true for this room, because I stepped into, I first heard it at a time when I was thinking about, what does it mean for me to step into public life? What are the sacrifices that I'm asking others to bear? What are the sacrifices that I'm bearing to be in this room, to leave something behind after my name has disappeared from whatever history book it ever makes it in? That's what your work is about, and it came across the one time I was able to see you perform live, it came across in the countless times I've heard Lin sing your role. So thank you for the inspiration and the reflection that it continues to bring me.
I also stand with the entire body of this council to speak on this resolution. Hamilton began as an inspired artistic achievement, quickly transformed into a global phenomenon. And let's remember, Chicago was the first city outside of Broadway to get this production, and rightly so. Here in Chicago, we had the privilege and pleasure of making our own mark on the stunning work over 171 weeks and more than 1,300 performances. This production, as some have said, contributed literally hundreds of millions of dollars annually to our local economy. So Lou, you got to bring us another winner. With the incredible cast led by Miguel Cervantes, along with the rest of the talented production team, all young, scrappy, and hungry. And you'll remember that Miguel joined us on inauguration day back in May. I personally had the privilege of seeing the show multiple times, the first time with the original cast in New York, and I can tell you, having seen the very last production, that cast, and I said this to Miguel and Kelly, was phenomenal, top to bottom, every single performer, absolutely was one of the best performances of any kind that I've ever seen. One of the things that made this work so special was its cross-section of musical genres that so brilliantly captured the essence of our country's cultural dynamism. But more than that, and expressing our diversity through our founding story. Hamilton connected young people to our past and inspired all of us to reach for our highest ideals as a land of opportunity and a home to all people. And as I said at the last production, say again, Hamilton's closure leaves a void here in Chicago, but its legacy lives on, and one of the recent speakers talked about the fact that literally thousands of Chicago public school students, because of the generosity of the cast, the crew, and the production, were able to see this incredible work that will be something that they will remember the rest of their lives. We of course must thank Lin-Manuel Miranda and Jeffrey Sellers, the producer, and of course Lou Razin, for the incredible work of bringing this production here and hopefully to come back in short time. Though we will miss the show, it will live on in our classrooms, revivals, and if you're anything like my family, in countless Schuyler Sisters sing-offs. Thank you once again for sharing your gift with this great city, for telling our story and teaching us how to say goodbye one last time. And I'd be remiss if I didn't also thank my wife for making sure that we didn't forget to mark the important occasion of the closing of this production. So thank you, Amy, for all of what you've done and your staff. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Alderman Mitchell, for adoption of the resolutions.
Madam President, I move the adoption of the foregoing resolutions in the omnibus.
By hearing no objections, so ordered.
I now move a return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Communications.
A series of communications from the Honored the Mayor, the Honorable the City Council of the City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreement concerning Tiff assistance for Chicago Park District. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours. of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Budget Director, I transmit here with the Fund 925 Amendment. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the spending authorization for the Neighborhood Opportunity Fund and associated program enhancements. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing a Class L tax assist for property located at 2300 South Indiana Avenue. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Assets, Information, and Services, I transmit here an ordinance, execution of a lease agreement with 571 West Polk LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Chairman of the Commission on Human Relations, I transmit here with an ordinance amending Chapter 2-120 of the Municipal Code Regarding Advisory Councils. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection, I transmit here with an ordinance amending Chapters 9-112 of the Municipal Code Regarding Taxi Medallion Revocation. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection, I transmit here with an ordinance amending Sections 10-28-010 and 015 of Municipal Code Regarding Public Way Permitting. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Transportation in Public Way. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Buildings, I transmit here with an ordinance making technical corrections to the Chicago Construction Codes. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. I transmit here with appointments to the Catalyst Fund. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to Chicago Commission on Human Relations Advisory Councils. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Health and Human Relations. I, City Clerk Anna Valencia, hereby inform the City Council of the following documents we filed in my office relating to respective subjects designated as follows. Inspector General's Audit of Department Innovation Technologies Management of City's Investment Information Technology and Final Denial Permit Application by Commission on Chicago Landmarks for Demolition of Property at 1330 West Clarksan Street and Proposed Pilsen Historic District. I, City Clerk Valencia, also inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on December 18, 2019, and which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form, or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on January 15, 2020 by being printed in full text and printed in pamphlet copies of Journal of Proceedings of City Council, City of Chicago. I also inform the City Council of the ordinance authorizing the imposition of tax levies approval of year 2020 budgets, execution of service provider agreements for special service areas numbers 38 and 16, which were passed by the City Council on December 18, 2019, which were requested to be published in special pamphlet form, were published in special pamphlet form on December 17, 2019. I also inform the City Council of the ordinance authorizing the imposition of tax levies approval of year 2020 budgets and execution of service provider agreements for special service numbers 1727, 28-2014, 32, 45, 47, 48, 52, 56, 59, 61, 63, and 69, which were passed by the City Council on December 18, 2019, which were requested to be published in special pamphlet form, were published in special pamphlet form on December 18, 2019. I also inform the City Council of the ordinance authorizing the imposition of tax levies approval of year 2020 budgets and execution of service provider agreements for special service area numbers 23, 62, 72, and 73, which were passed by the City Council on December 18, 2019, and which were requested to be published in special pamphlet form, were published in special pamphlet form on December 19, 2019. I also inform the City Council of the ordinance authorizing the enlargement of boundaries imposition of tax levies approval of year 2020 budgets and execution of service provider agreements for special service area numbers 1551 were passed by City Council on December 18, 2019, which were requested to be published in special pamphlet form, were published in special pamphlet form on December 19, 2019. I also inform the City Council of the ordinance authorizing the imposition of tax levy approval of year 2020 budget, execution of the Service Provider Agreement Amendment of the Year 2019 Appropriation Levy and Agreement for Special Service Areas 42, which were passed by the City Council on December 18, 2019, were requested to be published in special pamphlet form, were published in special pamphlet form on December 18, 2019. I also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications and reports requiring City Council action. Zoning Reclassifications of Particular Areas, which referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards, and Claims Against the City of Chicago, which referred to Committee on Finance.
Committee reports. Finance Chairman Wagasback.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which met January 13, 2020. Item number one is an ordinance amending Municipal Code Section 2-32-515 to make city investment policy compliant with the Illinois Sustainable Investing Act. This item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move to concur with the recommendation of the committee by a roll call vote.
Hearing no objection. Clerk, are you ready? Call the roll.
Alderman Laspada.
Aye.
Alderman Hopkins.
Aye.
Alderman Dowell.
Aye.
Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman Hairston.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Beal.
Aye.
Alderman Sedlaski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Carthannes.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Burke.
Aye.
Alderman Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Tabarez.
Aye.
Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Secho Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Irvin.
Aye.
Alderman Telefiero.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyes.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Wagasback.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Aye.
Alderman Villegas.
Aye.
Alderman Mits.
Aye.
Alderman Spazaro.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Alderman Dipolitano.
Aye.
Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Tony.
Aye.
Alderman Gardner.
Aye.
Alderman Kappelman.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell votes aye.
Aye.
Alderman Harris votes aye.
Aye.
Alderman Secho Lopez votes aye.
The vote is 48 yays and no nays. Motion passes. Chairman Wagasback.
Madam President, item number two is a substitute ordinance.
I'm sorry, pardon me.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Motion to reconsider the vote.
It's already been a long day, folks, sorry.
Reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion reconsideration respond by saying aye. All those opposed saying no, the motion fails. Chairman Wagasback, back to you.
Thank you. Item number two is a substitute ordinance amending the general obligation bond ordinance, Series 2019A bonds, and trust indenture regarding the expenditure of previously approved bonds for the Board of Elections. The item was approved by the committee on a voice vote. I want to thank my colleagues for the robust discussion during that meeting and for the amendment that was provided that made this ordinance better on its face. Now, if no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. We just asked that, and I still go ahead and vote for, but I think it was like, and I'll have my notes in front of me, like $92 million or something like that. Or I think it was a little bit more. We asked for that breakdown of what those obligation bonds in committee, what they were, those bonds were delegated to. So I didn't, I never got that. And I had asked for it in committee, and I would love to have that.
We'll make sure that we provide that information through the Chair. On the motion, hearing no objection, so ordered.
Madam President, item number three is an ordinance authorizing the Department of Housing to enter into redevelopment tax exempt bond agreement with Bickerdyke Redevelopment Corporation, Rockwell Community Development Incorporated, and associated entities for the construction of affordable rental housing at 2602 to 2638 North Emmett Street. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number four is an ordinance amending the intergovernmental tax increment financing ordinance for Revere Park Field House and Revere Park Boys and Girls Clubhouse at 2509 West Irving Park Road in the 47th Ward. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. Does Alderman Martin wish to speak on this?
Chair recognizes Alderman Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Briefly, this was a project that was started under my predecessor, Alderman and Maya Poore. $6 million going to the Revere Park Field House, as well as the neighboring Boys and Girls Club, which serves 1,500 individuals at and around the 47th Ward, many of whom are of lower income. It's a free program. The $6 million was primarily for AC to be installed, as well as ADA accessibility. There were cost overruns and DPD requesting additional $1.5 million. And I would appreciate your favorable consideration.
Madam President, if no one else wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Item number five, regarding monthly settlements through the law department, will be placed on file with the clerk. Items six through nine consist, actually, it's ordered. Item number five will be placed on file with the clerk.
Thank you.
Items six through nine consist of authorizations for the payment of various small claims against the city, denial of payment of various small claims against the city, and orders authorizing the payment of senior citizen rebate sewer claims. If there is no objection, I ask that these items be placed in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item nine consists of three orders authorizing corporation counsel to enter into and execute settlements in the cases of Hardiness versus City of Chicago, Kelly Hesby versus City of Chicago, Trayvon Gardner versus City of Chicago. And I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider, with the exception that there are a few Aldermen who wish to be recorded as voting no on item 1B, Hesby versus City of Chicago, and Gerald Breaman. That would include Alderman Taliaferro, Alderman Dipolitano, Alderman Austin, Alderman Spazaro, and if there are any others that wish to be recorded as voting no.
Alderman Cardenas. Alderman Dowell. Alderman Curtis. Alderman Nugent. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Madam President, I was at the committee, but I had a meeting. I had to go upstairs. And I did tell members of the IGA that I wanted to speak strongly on this matter. I read the transcripts, and I was appalled as I was reading in terms of what happened, the ongoings of this relationship, and the allegations that this was non-consensual. And I think it sends a wrong message to taxpayers. And I talked to a few people, a couple of them are here today. The fact that we're paying for money for people's behavior to have, you know, serious consequences, not just on work, but also on delivery of safety for our communities. And this should not be condoned whatsoever. I don't care what happens later, but what happened in the beginning is what matters to me. And I think, you know, we got to stake stock of these payments. We are basically paying somebody for their behavior. People want safe communities. People want our police to protect us, and this is not how it happens. It's just simply something we cannot condone and send the message that if you behave this way, the only way for you to be is out, and out of the force. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Chairman Wagasback.
Madam Chairman, I think there were a couple of other no votes. I just want to make sure they're correctly recorded.
I think we reflected on a record the ones that identify themselves here unless you have others. Cardona.
Yes.
Raboyes.
Aye.
Taylor. More, I think we had to before. Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I renew my motion, including the just stated no votes.
Hearing no objection, is subject to the council members who identified themselves as no votes, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee also made a recommendation of do not pass on item number 10, the case of Alma Benitez versus Paul Barr et al. In pursuant to Rule 44, this item is deemed tabled and will be placed on file.
So ordered.
This concludes the report of the Committee on Finance. Thank you, Madam President.
Committee on Budget and Government Operations, Chairman Dowell.
Sorry, Madam Chairman. Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on the Budget and Government Operations, which held a meeting on January 8, 2020, the committee recommends passage of the following item. An ordinance introduced by Alderman Matt O'Shea, 19th Ward, approving the transfer of funds within the City Council Committee on Aviation for the year 2019. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. That concludes my report.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Committee on Aviation, Chairman O'Shea.
Thank you, Madam President. Ladies and gentlemen, reporting for the Committee on Aviation, for which a meeting was held on January 10, 2020. The committee had two items under consideration. First item, appointment, reappointment of Eduardo M. Katias as a member of the Chicago Gary Regional Airport Authority. Second item was an agreement lease, renewal agreement with United Service Organization, or USO as commonly referred, at both O'Hare International and Midway International Airports. Both these items passed by the committee unanimously by all members present. If there are no objections, Madam President, I move the passage of these items by the same roll call as item number one of the Committee on Finance, the same motion reconsidered, if there are no objections. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Committee on Contracting Oversight and Equity, Chairman Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Contracting Oversight and Equity. Item number one, a communication concerning an appointment of members of the Affirmative Action Advisory Board. Items one through seven, and I shall read out their names. Eleanor Turner, Edith De La Cruz, Andrew Carnardi, I'm going to get it right in a minute. Gustavo Geraldo, Ray Rivera, Kimberly De Moore, Rick Blair, for a term effective immediately and expiring February 15, 2022. I move that the City Council concur in the recommendation of the first favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number eight, a communication concerning the reappointment of Nosa C. Awahima as a member of the Affirmative Action Board, and a term expired effective immediately and expiring February 15, 2022. Same motion, if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number nine, a communication recommending a proposed substitute resolution concerning Chief Procurement Officer and the Department of Procurement Services making business development resources available to the LGBT business enterprise. Same motion, if there is no objection.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to be on record and rise in strong support of this resolution. I'm proud to be a co-sponsor of it. What this resolution advocates for in regards to our LGBTQ siblings is something that we as a city and as individuals all want, to be recognized and to be counted for. as a city and as individuals all want, to be recognized and to be counted for who we are and for all that we are. I commend you for introducing a resolution that directs our government to intentionally position city resources for and collect data regarding our LGBTQ business community so that we can champion the successes of those businesses and identify where we can do better. I understand the concern of some that when one marginalized group fights and seeks justice, that it dilutes or detracts from fights that other groups continue to fight. I understand how the pain and anger of dreams deferred and injustices committed can keep us from recognizing the pain and struggles that others go through. What I challenge us all to consider and reflect on are the words of Dr. Beth Brown of Lincoln Park Presbyterian Church at our inauguration. Dr. Beth said, "What keeps us from the road to peace is scarcity thinking." Scarcity thinking, my apologies. "We are enough, and we have enough." I also ask that we reflect on your words that day, Madam President. That day, you said, "We are each other's harvest, business, magnitude, and bond." Rather than viewing issues, fights, and opportunities as being zero sum, what I ask is that we see the strength and power in our solidarity, in the realization that we all have a shared struggle, and that we can rise, fight, win, and celebrate our wins together. I'd like to thank all the stakeholders and members of our community, like Jeremy Holston, Director of the LGBT Chamber of Commerce of Illinois, that have had to struggle to reach this step, and much love and remembrance to the many who are no longer with us to see it. In closing, thank you, Mayor, for this resolution and for taking this first step to get the information necessary to bring more equity and justice to our LGBTQ family here in Chicago so that they may live their authentic lives in every facet of our society. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I reluctantly rise in support of this resolution. Not because I don't believe that it is a worthy discussion, and certainly not because I don't support the LGBT community, being one of the five members of the caucus here. I'm concerned because the opportunity to be manipulated is very great for something that we have no test, have no documentation, no way to verify. We know that we can verify ethnic origin. We know we can identify and verify sex, military status, and even if we're so bold one day to put a set aside for X offenders, we can verify that too. But how do you have the gay test? How do you verify that you're a part of a community? There's a risk, and we still don't even know, and I hope that as we move forward, we get answers, that there's even been denied access for the companies and businesses we're trying to bring in. I think the City of Chicago should be open to everybody, 100%. I think it's safe to say that we all feel that same way. But we have to be careful, and I commend you, and I commend Alderman Vasquez for bringing this conversation forward, but I just say, do it cautiously. Do it in a way so that we don't have the unintended consequences of trying to help our community with an unexpected entry for those who don't necessarily qualify, and we have no way of verifying. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. As we sat in committee the other day, and then Alderman Vasquez just hit it here, where we can do better, that question for me just kept coming up, and I wasn't getting the answer because that better means that something is wrong. And maybe I don't know what that something is wrong, that something is wrong is, and that's why I've been asking. And so yesterday, I did not get that answer. As I reached out and as I'm looking, and I'm seeing that even members of the gay caucus did not sign off on this and supported, not supported, I shouldn't say that, but wasn't co-sponsors on it, it made me just question even more. I talk with people in a community that I know. I think what's important to us as we elected, first of all, in our communities, we're elected to represent our constituencies, and we hear complaints and issues, whether it's from women, whether it's from, which is a big issue right now that we should be fighting, this gay homelessness, because that's what I'm hearing. A lot of our kids are on the streets and getting kicked out of the house because they're gay. That frustrates me, and those are the things I want to fight for. What I'm hearing is a problem. So I was frustrated somewhat yesterday that a guy from Washington is doing all the talking, and no one from Chicago was saying anything. No one from Chicago, from the community, was saying, "We got a problem here." They had, I felt insulted because I felt like they had one young black man up there to appease the black people to say, "Hey, this is okay." And he barely said anything. I was offended by that. Then, as I get into this, when we're talking about as we're moving, that it's not going to be a part of possibly the 26 and 6, and although everybody's saying, "Oh, this is just a study, this is just a study," I understand that. But then I asked, "Well, why don't we do a disparity study?" That's what everybody tells us to do when something is going on. Then I was like, "Well, we can't do a disparity study because I can't even remember what the answer is now." It's just that there's this, people sometimes don't want to address issues. It's not to me, as Tom Todd taught me, not the individual, but the institution, not the personality, but the policy. I want to make sure that the policy is right. And right now, I'm not feeling that the policy is right because I don't even want to hurt the very people that we're trying to help. Somebody wants saying, "Sometimes doing the right thing isn't doing the right thing." And I don't want to even hurt the people that we think we're trying to help. How then do I say, then we're going to come back to race? As I brought up to the mayor from Washington, as he's talking about this, this is in LA, California, I said, "Okay." He said, "Will we increase LGBT numbers?" Hi, I said, "How many of that was African-American?" He couldn't give me answers. What is, because I'm going to ask for that breakdown. I'm going to ask for that breakdown, and if I'm not seeing that increase, then that concerns me. And so with that, until I can get some more answers, some more answers, I cannot support this resolution today, and I would ask that we have a roll call on this. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Hadden.
Thank you, Madam President. It is difficult to figure out whether to react with humor or with anger to this discussion, but I'm going to try and keep it short. I hear lots of words like verification, test, people demanding proof, and that makes me feel all kinds of negative ways about pretty much every argument for every minority and marginalized group that we have ever dealt with in this country, and listening to every dominant group. Try and find ways to exclude them and be afraid about what you're going to lose. Yesterday, we'll see on the front page of the paper, two respected members of this body featured because they are making light of LGBT issues. Just because you don't understand something, just because it's not your personal experience does not mean that it is appropriate for you to make light of it. If you have questions, you should get answers. I will also say that we need to do better. Like, we need to do better, guys. So, I'm black, I'm a woman, and I'm a lesbian. I also come from a lower economic class background and layer everything else on that you want to have. This is a study. We don't know problems until we're told problems, and if someone's coming up with a resolution, it means that we've had groups that say this is an issue. Discrimination is an issue, discrimination against black people, against Latinx people, against women, against disabled people, against people in the LGBT community. It just is. I don't think we need a study to tell us whether this is an issue. We are going to do a study to figure out whether the City of Chicago is going to and should extend business services and to think about this. As someone who is part of a racial minority group, I absolutely share some of the same concerns of making sure that we've got a good policy and a program, if it's what we decide to do, that doesn't do damage to the types of programs that we already have for our women and minority-owned businesses. I, yeah, we got to do better, you guys. Being afraid and not understanding something is never an excuse to outright dismiss it. So I stand in strong support of this resolution for the City of Chicago to move forward. It's 2020, let's do some research, let's come up with a smart policy, and thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Kapelman.
Thank you, Madam President. I remember a few years ago when marriage equality was passed, a reporter, actually it was Fran Spielman, asked me, "What's next? Marriage equality, is there anything left?" And I remember telling her, at this point in time, members of the transgender community don't have a choice of where they can go to the bathroom. At that point in time, members of the transgender community were sometimes faced with having to go to the bathroom outside and then getting arrested for it. Thankfully, this body created a resolution, not a resolution, an ordinance, that allows members of the transgendered community to simply go to the bathroom that matches their gender identity, just simply that. And I say all that because we still have so far to go with members of the transgender community. When I first met you, Mayor Lightfoot, I said that I admired you because you were data-driven. And I know we're going to be confirming the appointment of Dr. Arty. Again, I admire her because she's data-driven. We're asking for data. Just simply, we want data so that we can be informed of evidence-based best practices so that we can then focus on good outcome measures. That's all. We've come so far, but we still have so, so far to go. The members of the transgendered community, they have the highest rate of suicide, they have disproportionate high numbers of arrests, disproportionate numbers that are thrown out of their family, so they have no support system. And if you're African-American transgender, you are in a tight spot. It's just, it's just not appropriate. I think this body can go a long ways by just recognizing that we need more work in this area to focus on all of us because we're all together. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alderman Cicchell-Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I also want to echo some of the comments that some of my colleagues have made, especially Alderman Hadden, and also strongly support this resolution. One of my mentors was actually, his kid Duffy was a strong advocate for the LGBTQ community. And oftentimes, I remember when we, as a Latino community, as a black community, will score gains for inclusion and participation, that she will celebrate with us. And there's so much more that we have in common, and that we talk about inclusion and social equity, that includes all of us. If it's veterans, if it's a black community, Latino community, all of us have to do much better about social equity, about inclusion and participation. That is, that's the challenge ahead, to make sure that we bring people together to understand our common ground. This is a common sense resolution. I think the chamber made very clear that this is best practices. Other cities are doing that, and they can show that they can certify these practices. We also know, we also know that we're going to take a year to make sure that we get it right. But I'm more concerned about what we've seen in the newspapers about the contracts and non-competitive bids that were given, like the example in the CHA. Those are the big issues that we have and that we have to battle. Bringing more people to the table, talking about social equity, making sure that we have more participation is not only best practices, it's the right thing to do. So I commend my colleagues, and I commend to the mayor for pushing for this legislation. That's what we need to do in the city to move forward. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Tony.
Actually, I rise to support in resolution. I was not at the, at the hearing, not because I was avoiding it, I had a fairly long zoning committee hearing, but as the dean of the LGBT Caucus and a white, so-called successful gay, openly gay business owner, this is not a new issue to the City Council. I brought this up, if I'm not mistaken, in my first term, in the, I mean, 2003 to '05, somewhere in that range, and I want to tell you, it was a different day, today's a different day, but I got more pushback from my own community than I did from the broader community at the time. And I'll tell you why, because I'm a privileged white guy, and that I got pushback from the women's community and the Hispanic and African-American community about divvying up a pot among privileged white guys. So, but I still think today is a different day, as my colleagues have talked about. But I, I really do think, and I don't think, I would ask Alderman Moore to take the roll call out of it. This is, and I read the resolution, this is, it's 2020. Let's take a look. Let's take a look at how we can help everybody. But I don't want to be a divisive factor in the idea that I am taking opportunities away from the women's community and minority communities. I withheld that ordinance, I believe, at the request of the LGBT community at that time. And so I am in support and actually would ask David Moore if he would not do a roll call vote. We don't need to put ourselves in a situation where we're more divisive about, about grants and contracts and such. You know, I looked at the resolution, and it said that many, many LGBT business, or business people are owners. No, they're not. They're just the same amount as everybody else, you know? And so I think that this is, this is a first step to say, "It's 2020, let's take a look at it. Let's, you know, let's not be divisive. There's enough in this room that we can be divisive about, and that doesn't heal our city, and that doesn't bring people together." So that's what I would say. We've been down that road, I've said this to the mayor, but I think it's time, we can take a look at it. It says, let's look at the recommendations. Maybe they'll, maybe they'll say that things aren't that much different and that they're, that we need to make sure that we have opportunities to level the playing field for women and other minority-owned businesses. And folks, we're not there yet, as you all know, in this council. So that's my two cents worth. Thanks.
I don't normally speak. Alderman Burnett.
Thank you, thank you very much. You know, I didn't even know I was on the front page of the Sun Times today. You know, and only thing I did was, the only thing that I did in that committee meeting was I asked questions. I asked the questions. You know, I've been in this council almost 26 years. Every, every LGBT, before it was LGBTQ thing that has come to this council, we have voted for. But, you know, I'm concerned. And what I asked, when I asked, what I asked, when I was at that meeting, I asked, I said that I was concerned, that it would take away from the minorities and the women who's already trying to get contracts, which we don't have a nice percentage of it already here in this city. You know, so they're still fighting and still struggling just to get to 30%, you know? And more, I contract with gay guys, you know? I give gay folks contracts in my ward. Matter of fact, in my campaign, the guys who did my social media was gay, right? White gay guys. I contract with them, but not because they were gay or because they was white, because they were good, right? But I tell you, you know, most, most of the ones in business that I know, they're doing pretty good. You know, I've seen, over the years, when we've had, when we've had female contractors who were being fronted by white men, and that concerns me. And I'm concerned about opening up another window for white males to manipulate. And I'm concerned about opening up another window for white males to manipulate the system and take something away from African-Americans, Hispanics, and real women contractors. You know, so I posed the question because it is a concern. And, and you know, you know, we can do everything that's popular, but you know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm at that space in my life where I don't have to do what's popular. I want to do what's right. And I got to say what I feel. You know, I feel like I'm concerned about that because I think it would take away from people. When I have gay, when I have African-American gay guys coming to me talking about the discrimination in their community, you know, and, and all these other things that's going on, I stand here and I fight for them for the, with the health department, with the AIDS money. They have challenges with that right now. I stand up with them, not because they, I stand up with them because they're African-Americans who's having a challenge. I'm not looking at their sexuality or whatever that is. I'm trying to stand up for fairness. You know, I don't get too many, I don't get too many, I've never gotten, I've never gotten a, a white gay guy come to me, asking me for help because they've been discriminated against. Now, I'm gonna tell you, and I had a conversation with, I had a conversation today with somebody. And I was saying, you know, the, I would say, the transgenders out of that group, the transgenders I think are discriminated against. I think transgenders would get discriminated against. I think they probably go through a lot of discrimination. I agree with that. But white gay males, I don't think they're discriminated against. And I, you know, I just got to say that. I, I, I think a lot of them do well, they do fine, and you know, and, and I'm concerned that folks would try to manipulate this and it would hinder us, or it hinder other folks who's trying to get up to where we, you know, we're just trying to get a little bit. If we, and you know, God knows, if we didn't have these things in place, these status signs in place, a lot of African-Americans wouldn't get jobs, period. And I, and I know that because, because some of the things we have in place, as soon as they try to go out in the private industry and get it, they don't get anything. They only get it because of government, because we have these status signs. You know, and it, and it just shows you that there is discrimination still in this society. You know, and people of color all over the world get discriminated against, all over the world, not just here in Chicago, not just here in this city, but all over the world, people of color get discriminated against. And you go to any city, even when we went to Puerto Rico, the dark Puerto Ricans get less than the, than the light-skinned Puerto Ricans. It's all over the world. You go to India, you go to all these countries all over the world, darker people get discriminated against, but every, and that's known. You don't even have to do a study for that. Now, you know, I don't have a problem voting on the study, but I'm just letting you know I have a concern. I have a concern about the system being manipulated, and I have a concern about, you know, maybe helping someone else and hurting some other folks that's already hurting. You know, and that's a concern of mine. And, and you know, I'm not gay-bashing, you know, I have friends that's gay, I have family members that's gay, you know what I'm saying? I help gay people every day. I do business with gay folks. It ain't about the gay thing. It's about the white male, the white privilege thing that Alderman Tunny says that goes on in our society, and, and other folks get discriminated against because of it. And that's my concern. I'm concerned about the white privilege of the white males in this, in this city, in this country, that do better than everybody else just because they're a white male, and everybody else had to fight to be, to be equal, fight to get up there, fight to be treated fair, because of that. So that's my concern.
Thank you, Alderman.
I'm concerned about folks getting treated fair.[840.32][840.32](APPLAUSE).
The chair recognizes Alderman Raigus.
You know, I, it's, it's often that I look at Alderman Tunny and I see someone who I don't always agree with. I don't. You know, we've had some remnants over time, but I will say this about Alderman Tunny. He's an, he's an individual who brings a humility to this table and who understands what it means to bring unity to a space. So I appreciate what you've said. And I think what you're doing, in my opinion, is you're living a life of abundance. And I feel like we're called, and my faith calls me, to live a life of abundance and understanding that if we look out for a brother and sister that's not necessarily meets who we are, we're not necessarily detracting from ourselves or those who we represent. We're adding to the whole. And I think that instead of thinking about a scarcity mindset here, we need to look at abundance. And the fact is, I think I was at a different committee meeting yesterday, because I heard very specific answers around certification procedures and around what the true intent of this resolution was. It says it quite clearly. Let's get the data. Let's understand what's going on with our LGBTQ brothers and sisters. The fact is, you can say it anecdotally, you could look at evidence, that community, our siblings in that community have experienced significant issues and significant comments that are counter that community. I don't think anyone in this chamber is trying to be outwardly against the community. I do think that we need to show leadership, and we need to step up. And that's why I want to stand today to support this resolution and to support my siblings in this community. The fact is, we're looking at data. We're trying to figure out what's going on here. We heard very specific testimony and comprehensive testimony about how this is certified or not. I, I just, I just don't buy the argument. And I think that we need to live in abundance here, my brothers and sisters, and we need to vote in favor of this resolution, and we need to continue to support these types of efforts. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. We need not to become a circular firing squad. I, I agree with just about everything that was stated today. Alderman Hatton, you are my sister. And what ails and hurts and affects you ails, hurts, and affects me. I would say the same, Madam President, you are my sister. And what we cannot do is bifurcate ourselves to a point where we are continuously fighting over the 30% or the 32% as it is today, and adopt the philosophy that Alderman Rodriguez speaks of, where we need to be dealing in abundance and talking about the 100%. We know and understand in this city that there have been challenges, there have been people who have decided to take advantage of certain opportunities. We do not want that to happen, not just with this case, but in any case. But we also want the issues and concerns of veterans, of ex-offenders, and other marginalized and discriminated communities, those challenges and concerns to also be met in this conversation and to be thought about negatively, to ask a question. I think we are getting in a mentality where we're trying to go back to that circular firing squad. And so we, as a body, and I, and I would agree with Alderman Tunny about us not only working together on this issue, but all of the issues that surround marginalized and affected communities. So let's not just separate this, but let's look at everything. And I think that that is what we all want to do, because most of us in this room are a part of some minority class. But when you add us all up, we're greater. So let's not separate ourselves on these issues like this. Let's fight because your fight is our fight and our fight is your fight. Because again, we need not be fighting over some crumbs here, that we need to be looking at the bigger piece, and as Alderman Rodriguez says, to be looking at it in the abundance. And so if there were words that I said, or anyone said, that people took offense to, let's understand that we are looking for the abundance for everybody, not just for one group, not just for another group, but for everybody. And so I do support this, this resolution. I believe that we need to focus our efforts and attention, not just in the LGBTQ space, but also in many spaces with our marginalized communities, so again, that we can live and deal, as Alderman Rodriguez says, in the abundance. And I too, I would ask, because we cannot continue to divide ourselves in any way, shape, or fashion. We've got a lot of fights outside of this body that we need to be looking for and dealing with to help our, help our city. And that we need to be walking together, singing from the same hymnal, working together to right the wrongs and do what's necessary to lift everybody. As they say, the rising tide should lift all boats. And everybody should be able to participate. Everyone should have that abundance, not just the select few. And we want to work as a unit, as a council, as a body, to help get us there. So I, I too would ask, in relation, that we all work on this together and actually take a stand together, not just on this issue, but let's not forget about the other issues from other marginalized and discriminated against communities, and help them as well and help us as we help you. Thank you, Madam President.
Chair recognizes Alderman Dow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually, Alderman Irvin said a lot of what I wanted to say. And to my colleague, Alderman Rodriguez, you talked about unity in a space, and those are just words. But we need to be intentional about our work and have a commitment that basically gets us to an outcome that uplifts everybody in our respective communities. So I support the resolution, and I support this resolution, but I do feel that the amount of attention and emphasis on this particular resolution needs to be the same kind of emphasis on veterans, on disabled, on African-Americans. We fight every year, looking at our budget and the percentage of contracting that goes to African-American companies. And we know we have a problem, but we need to be intentional about this, and the same effort that we're putting to the numbers, the outcomes, is the same attention we need to put on everything else. And so if we're going to have unity in the space, it can't just be about words. It's got to be about action and activities and intentional movement so that we uplift everybody, and that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alderman Villegas.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand in strong support of this resolution. At the committee meeting, what I sensed was just frustration. Frustration that the billions of dollars that are spent, that the African-American community, the Latino community, the women's community, the veterans' community, is not getting our fair share. And I would just like to send a message to those folks that are doing business with the city, that want to do business with the city. You have 32 members of this city council that are minority. You add another two white women, that's 34 members of this city council that are either minority or women, which is the majority. And so when you come to the city council, or you come to the departments with contracting, subcontracting goals, that are not reflective of the city of Chicago, we're going to say something, because we're tired of it. We're tired of this. And so I would take, I would like to take a look at, you know, not just the lowest bidder, but the lowest responsible bidder. Who are those folks that are actually listening to what the message that's being portrayed out there in the city of Chicago that we want to have inclusive? Everybody in, no one left out. So this message really is to the folks that want to do business with the city, that we're sick and tired of seeing the same old characters getting awarded the contracts, our communities being locked out. And I look forward to working with the chief procurement officer to help develop strategies with this administration to get more diversity and making sure that our communities are participating and we're at the table and not on the menu. So ladies and gentlemen, I would urge all my colleagues to support this resolution. It's just a study, and it will go from there. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, if I may. I don't normally speak during city council debates, and I won't use this privilege often. But I feel compelled to speak to this issue. When I was a child, I grew up at a time when racial discrimination was very much on the table. And I heard and witnessed and experienced a lot of offensive, harmful things said in my presence as a Black child. As a child, I didn't have the words, the voice, or the strength to speak up. And I bear the shame of my silence to this day. When I was coming out in my twenties, similarly, I was worried about how I would be perceived. And I let people say terrible things about gays and lesbians in my presence, and I was silent. I will be silent no more on any issue. When people say and do things that are offensive and racist, I feel like I have an obligation to speak, and so I am. It's not the questions that are the problem. It is the content of the questions and the offensive nature of the tone and the questions and the, and the concerns, in quotes, that were expressed. And as a leader, as a Black gay woman, proud on all fronts, I have to say I'm disturbed by the nature of the committee discussion and the nature of discussion here today. We need not ask anyone's indulgence, patience, or forgiveness, or acceptance to be who we are and who we love. And that will never happen as long as I am in this body. And it's also shameful for any member of a discriminated community to give indulgence to offensive words spoken by someone else. In some ways, that's even worse. My friends, the pie is big enough to slice it in lots of other ways. What we are asking for is data, a study to determine where we are. And yes, of course, we need to work on other issues, but we need not victimize, demonize, and discriminate through our words against anyone else, because we are worried about what the size of the pie is going to be for me. So please, our children are watching. Please choose your words carefully in this body. We are leaders. People look to us. They will take our words seriously, as they should. And I would just say, be careful in how you express yourselves. Of course, ask questions. That's what a deliberative body does. But do it in a way that doesn't demonize or victimize anyone else. Thank you, Madam Chairman.[1700.13][1700.13](APPLAUSE).
Alderman Moore, you have a motion for recall, for a roll call.
Yes.
Are you standing on that motion?
Yes.
Madam Clerk.
I'd like to speak.
Chairman, please.
I think our minds was on the same page. Madam President, I twisted and turned in this chair because I was hearing some of the same things that were spoken yesterday. But I want to remind everybody in this council that it wouldn't be an MBE or WBE without a study. And that is all that this is asking for. When we were discriminated against yesterday, not years before, these things would not be adhered to had we not had a study. Every time that study come up, we have to squeeze the breath out of that man to get a number out. So for this to take place today, for the, the community that has really been scorned against, we should be ashamed of ourselves not to want to help in any kind of way. Everybody in here can say that, well, I have one in my Everybody in here can say that, well, I have one in my family. Everybody, you have a friend, a family member, that's a part of this community, and you should want to help in any way. As I said earlier, you should help somebody along the way. And that's what we should be doing. At this juncture, our mayor should not have to say these words, be being offensive to. I think that is wrong of anyone that got up and had disperaging words. So for that, Madam President, I move the recommendation over his objection, because we've discussed this enough. We need to move upon it.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Lasbada. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dow. Alderman King. Alderman Hairston. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Harris. Alderman Beal. Alderman Zelaski Garza. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Cardenas. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Scott. Alderman Sechill Lopez. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Talafaro. Alderman Reboyas. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Wagispack. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Villegas. Alderman Mitz. Alderman Spesato. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Riley. Alderman Smith. Alderman Tunny. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Kappelman. Alderman Martin. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Haddon. Alderman Silverstein.
On the matter of the roll call, the yeas are 47 and nays are 1. The motion passes. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, motion to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion to reconsideration signify by saying aye. On the opposed, say no.
No.
The motion fails. Chairman Austin.
Madam President, that concludes this report.
Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, Chairman Villegas.
Madam President, members of the city council reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, which held a meeting on January 7, 2020. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following items. Item 1 through 6 are a series of appointments and reappointments to various special service areas. Ryan Siegel to SSA Number 1, State Street Commission. Sofia Villarreal to SSA Number 3, Southwest Business Growth Area Commission. Patricia McCoy to SSA Number 51, Chatham Cottage Grove Commission. Clarence Grover to SSA Number 51, the Chatham Cottage Grove Commission. C. Allen Smith Jr. to SSA Number 24, Clark Street Commission. And Ellen Goldberg to SSA Number 24, the Clark Street Commission. I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 7 is the Class L tax incentive for historic landmark property located at 1835 West Harrison Street for ground lease owners, CHDG Phase 1A1 Hotel Retail Owner LLC and CHDG Phase 1A1 Office Owner LLC. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, on Rule 14, Item 82019-136, Special Service Area Number 3, Southwest Business Growth Area Commission, Alderman Burke will abstain from voting on this item. Within the preceding 12 months, Alderman Burke practiced law with other attorneys in a law firm. Other attorneys in the firm represented Greater Southwest Development Association within the preceding 12 months in property tax appeals at the Cook County Assessor, Cook County Border Reviews, and Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board relating to various items. Thank you, Mr. President. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Villegas. Alderman Coleman, you wish to be recognized? Alderman Coleman seeks to be recorded as aye on the first favorable roll call, the Committee on Finance. Madam Clerk, so ordered. We just did that. Okay, well, report from the Committee on Health and Human Relations from Chairman Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the city council, reporting for your Committee on Health and Human Relations, which held a meeting on January 10, 2020. The committee has a report recommending passage of the following items. The first item, a communication from the Honorable Mayor Lori E. Leifert, appointment of Dr. Allison Arwadi as Commissioner of the Department of Health. I would ask that this matter, I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote in the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider, with the exception of Alderman Chris Taliaferro, who was voting no on this matter.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item Number 2, Amendment of the Municipal Code, Chapter 2-173, regarding welcoming cities ordinance and related immigration issues.
Mr. Chairman, can you hold for one moment? I just want to say on the appointment of Dr. Arwadi, this is a win for the entire city. Dr. Arwadi, as you know, has been serving as the acting commissioner for the last seven months. She has, in many ways, been preparing for this role her entire career. From her early years conducting pulmonary research, to her time in Botswana tackling tuberculosis and HIV, to her years with the Center for Disease Control, where she focused on outbreak response across Illinois, all of which came before she assumed the role of Chief Medical Officer for our own Chicago Department of Public Health. It's there where Dr. Arwadi oversaw everything from disease control to environmental health, emergency preparedness, and much more. And thanks to her leadership, Chicago's adolescent immunization rates rose to historic highs, while teen smoking and birth rates fell to historic lows, and the list goes on. I've had the privilege of being in Dr. Arwadi's presence amongst her peers at private and safety net hospitals. And it's clear to me, the command that she holds of the room, that she is well-respected by her peers, and we are lucky to have her lead our Department of Public Health in its next chapter. Congratulations.
Thank you, Madam President. Item Number 2, Amendment of the Municipal Code, Chapter 2-173, regarding welcoming cities ordinance and related immigration issues. I move passage of the item by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Carlos Rosa.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise in support of this very important ordinance today. It was in the fall of 2015 that immigrant advocacy groups, immigration policy experts, lawyers, undocumented immigrant activists in the city of Chicago came together to form the Chicago Immigration Policy Working Group. And it was at that point in time that they put forward five issues that they wanted the city of Chicago to address, to strengthen protections for the immigrant community, to make sure that we're doing more to integrate the immigrant community. And one of those issues that they identified was the necessity to amend the welcoming city ordinance, to remove the carve-outs, to make sure that no one in the city of Chicago would be afraid to call 911. The fact that we can pick up the phone and call 911 without fear to our families is something that we don't often think about. But unfortunately, in municipalities across this nation, immigrant communities, women who are battered, individuals that are in fear for their lives, are oftentimes too scared to pick up the phone and call 911 when they need help. And the reason why is that unfortunately, for too many years now, has ICE sought to marry federal immigration law enforcement with local law enforcement. When immigrant communities are afraid to pick up the phone and call 911, we are all less safer. And that is why the amendments that we're moving forward today are so important. I don't just see this as a matter of protecting our immigrant community, I see this as a public safety measure. And I want to commend all of the immigrant activists, I want to commend all of the individuals in the Chicago Immigration Policy Working Group that worked so hard to move forward this ordinance. I want to ask them to stand up if they would take a moment to do so. I know there was a lot here today, earlier in the morning, but we've spoken now, there's still a lot of folks here. It was because of their work, because of a mayor who cares deeply about the immigrant community and wants to do everything the city can to protect that community, it was because of my colleague Alderman Rodriguez, but most importantly, because of these activists that were moving forward with these amendments today. It is not the final step that we have to take to fully strengthen the welcoming city ordinance. As a result of ongoing federal litigation, we cannot remove the amendments, we cannot remove the carve-outs at this time. But I feel confident that this is an important first step that will make sure that we can continue to ensure that Chicago is at the forefront of protecting immigrant communities and making the city a safer place for all. So thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you so much to my colleagues for supporting this measure today.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too rise to support this resolution, and I'm proud to be a co-sponsor of this effort. I want to congratulate you, Mayor, and Alderman Ramirez Rosa, for working on this issue. It was two months into your administration, Mayor, when our president, in a xenophobic and racist way, threatened immigrant communities with deportation across our country. And you stood with us on 26th Street, the street, the second magnificent mile that I represent, where we generate some of the highest tax revenue for the city of Chicago. And why is that? Because of the vast number of immigrants that flock to that business district, that live around that business district, and the surrounding communities that support the efforts of immigrants that have come here to be entrepreneurs, that have come to this country to make this country what it is. It's so fitting that we had Miguel Cervantes here from Hamilton. You know, Hamilton was an immigrant to this country. And he defined so much of what our country has become, in many ways positive, and some I would argue not as positive. But with that said, I think the immigrant community deserves to feel safe, deserves to feel supported. And the fact is, is that our welcoming city ordinance and the amendments that we have in place today will do so. People will feel safer about calling the police if they feel that they are in danger of violence and if they need to seek resources. We have more to do, and I'm glad you're committed, Mayor, to coming back to this issue once federal litigation is resolved, to end the carve-outs, to end the double jeopardy that our community still faces with the carve-outs that are still in our welcoming city ordinance. I too want to commend the efforts of my brothers and sisters in the immigrant community, who I've worked with for going on decades, Fred. And I'm looking forward to the continued work, and I thank you very much for standing with us on 26th Street and standing with us today, Mayor.
Chairman Sawyer.
I renew my request to have these items passed by the most favorable roll call vote in the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
I have two other items. Item 3 and 4 are both referred to the same committee. Number 3, Amendment to Municipal Code, Section 2-152-090, by adding Juneteenth, as official city holiday and closure of municipal office and observance thereof. And item Number 4, calling for hearings on women's roles in the cannabis industry. I would ask that they both be re-referred to the Committee on Workforce Development.
So ordered.
This concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Committee on Housing and Real Estate, Chairman Osterman.
Madam President, members of the city council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held one meeting last week on Tuesday, January 7, 2020, and two meetings this week, Tuesday, January 14, and this morning, January 15. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following ordinance. Item Number 1 is a series of appointments and reappointments for membership of the Community Land Trust. Those individuals that are appointed are Ciara Boatright, Terry Haymaker, Benjamin Helpan, Alyssa Herrera, Catherine Tholen, Natasha Nemyame, Juan Sebastian Ariz, and Timothy Clunt. Those reappointed are William Towns, Joy Argareta, Calvin Holmes, and Robert McGee. I move passage of this ordinance with the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to be recorded as voting no on the four reappointments.
I'm sorry, could you repeat yourself?
As voting, be recorded as voting no on the four reappointments, please.
Chairman Osterman, subject to Alderman Lopez's objection.
Notwithstanding that objection, I move passage of this agreement by the first favorable roll call of the vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
And with Alderman Lopez's objection in mind, I hear no further objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Item Number 2 is an ordinance for the Amendment of the Troubled Buildings Initiative Ordinance to allow the city acquisition of assets and financing from the Community Initiatives Incorporated and NHS Redevelopment Corporation. For the record, Alderman Michael Rodriguez would like to abstain from this, as he is a member of the NHS Board. I move the passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item Number 3 is an ordinance for the acquisition or purchase of property located at 941-943 West Castlewood Terrace for the expansion of John T. McCutcheon School for a gym and a extension of their building in the 46th Ward. I move for passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item Number 4 is an ordinance for the ann-lap sale of vacant city-owned property located at 4301 South Wood Street to David Mercado in the 15th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item Number 5 was a substitute ordinance for the sale of vacant city-owned properties under the Large Lot Program ordinance in the following wards, the 6th, 8th, 9th, 10th, 15th, 16th, 17th, 20th, 21st, 24th, 28th, 29th, 34th, and 37th wards. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Final item is a substitute ordinance, calling for the temporary moratorium of demolition permits within the 606 area from February 1, 2020, until August 1, 2020, in the 1st and 22nd, and 1st, 26th, and 35th wards. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
This concludes our report. Thank you.
Okay. That concludes your report?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to call the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Vice Chair Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Reporting for your Committee on Transportation and Public Way, a meeting was held on January 7, 2020. The following ordinance passed by the majority of the members present. First, Page 2 is a mero appointment of Gia Biagi as Commissioner of Transportation. Second item, Pages 3 through 31, includes 348 ordinances for grants of privileges introduced by the local aldermen from wards 1 through 5, 7, 9 through 12, 14, 15, 17 through 20, 22 to 33, and 35 through 50. The third item is Page 32, which includes 17 ordinances for canopies introduced by the local aldermen from wards 1, 3, 4, 13, 15, 20, 23, 27, 42, 44, and 47. Fourth item, Pages 33 through 36, 33 through 36, includes 30 ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by the local aldermen from wards 1, 4, 18, 21, 25, 27, 30, 35, 36, 42, and 49. The fifth item, Page 37, includes a vacation ordinance located in the 42nd Ward. I believe, Madam President, Alderman Moore would like to speak on this item.
Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. I asked to speak on this item because as we're dealing with, as we're talking about contracts, I had an opportunity to speak with Tyler Lampke, he's returned my phone calls, and I thank him for that. But I have to say that I'm always concerned, and I want this body to always address situations that we've talked about earlier. Of all these jobs that's being let by the contractor, Clark Construction, the prime, there are no African-American primes on here. And some of these jobs are painting, what, $300,000 or what, something like that. And when I hear about that, then I ask why, then I get answers like, well, they were, felt like they couldn't take it on because they'd be kicked out of the program if they took the contract. I think we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21. 21 different trades that are contracted out here, and from a prime standpoint, no African-Americans. Yes, they've committed to me, and they say they've started talking with to bring in sub-primes to that. And so, no commitments have been made, though. So at some point, when we're talking about, we have to work harder, we have to make sure that people of color, and especially African-Americans, who I have to fight for in my community and part of my Latino community as well, making sure that they get these contracts, we have to put things in place that assures this. And so, I appreciate the conversation, I will be watching. I think this is in Alderman Rowley's Ward. I hope he works with me and the contractors to assure even beyond the minimum 26 and 6, and go even further. But I will continue to work with Tim Lampke to assure that Clark Construction at least bring on those sub-primes. I'm not in a position trying to hold up something in your ward, Alderman, but until we start getting development on the south side of Chicago, we have residents in this city who are leaving this city, but in order to keep them here, we have to put them to work throughout this city. So I want Clark Construction to continue to have this conversation with me, and it's not over after this is passed today. Thank you, Madam President.
Continuing on with your report on the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, item number six. Page 37 includes an ordinance for a limited release of an existing easement located in the 42nd Ward. Item seven, ordinance O20199630 for Commonwealth Edison. Alderman Villegas will abstain from voting on this item within the preceding 12 months. The alderman was a member of a consulting firm that worked with ComEd, and although Alderman Villegas is in the process of divesting from the firm, he was not involved in the application for the granted privilege, did not receive any income or compensation, but out of abundance of caution, Alderman Villegas will abstain. If there is no objection, I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. This concludes my report.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Let me just say with respect to Gia Biagi, she is the right person for the right time as the next Commissioner of the Department of Transportation. Her expertise and years of on-the-ground experience make her the ideal choice to lead our ambitious agenda for CDOT. She has a proven track record of leadership, bringing more than 20 years of experience in urban design and planning to this position, experiences she gained in the private sector at a world-renowned firm here in Chicago, and in the public sector with the city over 10 years of service at the Chicago Park District and the Department of Planning and Development. Gia will be charged with leading and implementing a comprehensive strategy for building modern infrastructure for the 21st century, and I know that she's up to the task. This strategy advances accessible, reliable, and affordable transportation systems that support all 70/70 of Chicago's communities. It includes continuing our work to study and recommend solutions to address congestion, and continuing to partner with the CTA to implement the city's Bus Priorities Zone Program, which is designed to make bus service faster and more reliable along core routes. CDOT's role in broader city capital plans will also help to support the revitalization of priority areas, including the 10 commercial corridors that are the focus of our administration's Invest Southwest Initiative. And I also want to make sure that I thank Tom Carney, First Deputy, for his dedication and service as the interim Commissioner over the past eight months. As we move, thank him. And as we move ahead, I look forward to working side-by-side with Gia and the entire CDOT team. As you know, this body is actively engaged with CDOT, and we appreciate the outreach that you've done to members of the City Council. They're a vital part of our future in transportation, and we need to make sure that we're responsive to the needs of every ward. Together, we will implement our vision for equitable, comprehensive urban planning and transportation that supports everyone and every neighborhood. Thank you very much, and congratulations. Committee on License and Consumer Protection, Chairman Mitz.
Reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection, we held a meeting on January 8th, 2020, to consider the following ordinance. Item number 2019-9397, amended section 4-4 of the Municipal Code of Chicago regarding the mobile retail operator license. Mayor Leifert, Alderman Mitchell, and Commissioner of BCAP. Item number 202019-9412, ordinance regarding regulating, regulation of license at the Reglafield Plaza in the 44th Ward. Item number 302019-9425, ordinance prohibiting the booting of vehicles on private property by private firm in the 4th Ward, Alderman King. There were two ordinance to amend the Municipal Code of Chicago designating precincts of the 13th Ward and the 23rd Ward as restricted residential zone prohibiting additional shared housing in the 13th and 23rd. These recommendations were concurred in by voice vote of the members of the License Committee on January 8th, 2020. I move, Madam President, I move that the City Council concur in the recommendation of the License Committee by the same roll call as item number one of the Committee on Finance and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, Chairman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which a meeting was held on Tuesday, January 14th, 2020. Before the committee, there were 223 items, there were 214 routine traffic items that passed, and nine routine traffic items that did not pass. If there is no further objections, I move for the passage of these ordinances in the omnibus. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Burnett. Committee on Public Safety, Chairman Talia Farrow.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Public Safety, for which a meeting was held Tuesday, January 7th, 2020, was recessed and reconvened on Thursday, January 9th, of 2020. There were three items before the committee for consideration. Item number one was the appointment of Jorge Montez to the Chicago Police Board, that item passed by voice vote. Item number two, a resolution with subject matter hearing only to address unruly motorcycles and bike stunt riding groups. Item number three was an ordinance before the committee, called for the installation of Norris monitoring systems along Lake Shore Drive. This item was held in committee at the request of Chief Sponsor Alderman Hopkins. I'll be honored with regard, Madam President, with regard to item number one, if there are no objections, I move for the passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. And just so the record is clear regarding the motion on the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, that motion is also ordered. Thank you.
Madam President, that concludes my report. However, if there are no objections, I move for the temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of a resolution honoring one of our colleagues to be read by the clerk.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Madam Clerk?
Resolution honoring 38th Ward Alderman Nicholas Spisato and his retirement from the Chicago Fire Department.
The mayor says that we got to do it.
Whereas Honorable firefighter Nicholas Nick Spisato retired from the Chicago Fire Department in November 30th, 2019, after 26 years of outstanding and distinguished firefighting service to the residents of the city of Chicago. And whereas firefighter Spisato joined the fire department, Chicago Fire Department on September 1st, 1993, was the first assigned to Tower Ladder 14 in Chicago's Austin neighborhood, and held further assignments with Truck 58 in Belmont Craigan, Truck 35 in Bucktown, and Truck 9 in Oriole Park. While on the job, he served as a five-time elected steward within the Chicago Firefighters Union Local 2. And whereas firefighter Spisato and members of Truck 58 and Truck Company 35 were honored of acts of heroism and stamina in rescuing an elderly couple found unconscious in a basement unit in 2,900 block of North Kilpatrick Avenue in January of 2005. Whereas firefighter Spisato was first elected as Alderman of Chicago's 36th Ward in 2011 and took a leave of absence from his job, he was re-elected as Alderman of 38th Ward in 2015 and again in 2019, extending his compassion for public service as elected official for the residents of the 36th and 38th Wards. And whereas firefighter Spisato has shown a lifelong commitment to public service beyond his tenure at the Chicago Fire Department and Chicago City Council, first recognized as a junior leader by the Chicago Park District in 1975, the Honorable Nick Spisato served as president of the Sire Language Academy Local School Council, was president of the Trinity High School Fathers Club, and remains active with the Chicago Firefighters and Catholic Charities Annual Christmas Toy Drive, PA Chicago, and St. Baldur's Foundation. And whereas firefighter Spisato may be retiring from the Chicago Fire Department, his colleagues with the Chicago City Council look forward to his continued service and leadership as Alderman of the 38th Ward. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor and members of the City Council of the city of Chicago, gathered here this 15th day of January 2020, do hereby extend to our colleague, the Honorable firefighter Nicholas Nick Spisato, our sincere and grateful appreciation for his outstanding record of personal and professional achievement within the Chicago Fire Department, and our best wishes to him and his family on his retirement. And be it further resolved that a suitable copy of this resolution be prepared in presentation to the Honorable Nicholas Nick Spisato. Congratulations, Alderman.
I think the body would like to hear from you, Alderman Spisato.
Thank you, Madam President. My first request would be to nobody else comment, the day's going long enough, so, all right? We don't need another marathon thing, all right? Let's have a short resolution, let's have a short resolution with just me commenting. I just want to thank you all, but first and foremost, I want to thank my first responder family, all the firemen I work with, the paramedics and the police officers, I mean, they're unbelievable, nobody knows what we go through, there's a handful of us in here that are first responders, and you never know what's going to happen day-to-day. But I am who I am and where I am today because of all the hard work and men and women that I've worked with, and not only hard work, but very generous compassion to people, so it was a job of a lifetime, I thought, until I got this job, now this is the job of a lifetime, so. But I just appreciate everybody, and it was more symbolic than anything, obviously I couldn't go back being in a wheelchair, but I appreciate Brian Hopkins and Chris bringing this up, so. No, 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 I'm done, I'm done. But thank you all very much, and Madam President, if you don't allow anybody else to speak, I would greatly appreciate it.
My hands are tied. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I hate to defy a direct request from our honorary on a special day, but this being the City Council, it's unlikely, Nick, that you're going to be the only one to speak. I do want to say that having the distinct privilege to prepare this resolution on your behalf, which was in fact signed by all 49 of your colleagues, and in collecting the signatures, everyone had a comment to share, everyone had something to say about you, their association with you, their friendship with you, the stories of heroism, your 26 years of service. So, Madam President, I would yield my time at this point to allow some of my colleagues who do wish to speak, and acknowledge the 26 years of dedication and sacrifice that you gave to the city's Chicago firefighter Spisato. I yield my time, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Madam President. I chose to speak just because Nick said he didn't want me to speak, so. Thank you for supporting this, Madam President. I'd just like to say there's many firemen sitting in the box back here, gallery, that Alderman Spisato worked with, I had the pleasure of working with him as well. One of them was his brother Lenny Spisato, who was my lieutenant for about 10 years, and I shed a lot of blood, sweat, and tears with Lenny, and he yelled at me a lot for 10 years, and nothing was better for me to come here and now just shed tears with Nick, and he took the reins of yelling at me constantly for the last six years. But I just want to say, I appreciate everything you do, brother, you are an incredible man, you are constantly on me, and I love you for that, and I do appreciate everything you do every day of the week. You are 150% this job, and you are a great man, great fireman, and probably by far to me, one of the best aldermen in this council. And as you know, he wears it on his sleeve. Again, Nick, thank you for all you do, thank you, Madam President, for doing this.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nick, I also rise because you asked us not to rise. One thing that I can say about Nick is every time a first responder, every time a firefighter, anybody that has to do anything with service in this city and this country, Nick is the first person to step up and talk about the job and the heroism that they exude just from being in that position. And I appreciate you for your love of your city, your country, your fellow service members, men and women. My uncle also was a firefighter that retired this year, and every time we have conversations about my fellow aldermen and kind of my job, the first person that he talks about is Nick, the second person he talks about is Jimmy, I don't know why, but he always talks about you and your service, and him meeting you throughout his course of his career, and you always being supportive, and so I thank you for him, and I thank you for your service to this city. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Gardner.
I just, very quick, Nick, I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything you've done. I know as a fireman, we never had a chance to work together. I generally, unlike yourself and Alderman Napolitano, I went to busier areas, but hey, you guys, no, no, but you are still a brother of mine, now you're a brother council member as well. I'm hoping that Alderman Napolitano starts to actually return some of your calls now after making that speech, but thank you very much for all you've done, Nick. With all sincerity, you know how it is in a firehouse, we don't beat around the bush too much, so thank you for all you've done for the city.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Villegas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, or Madam President, rather, I'm sorry. Just wanted to congratulate my friend Nick, Northwest Side. He's the glue for all the aldermen on the Northwest Side, making sure that as we advocate as a block for resources, whether it be for first responders, or just for any type of investments, he's always been someone there that puts us together so that way as a multiple voices, we can advocate for our communities on the Northwest Side. And Nick has always been a big supporter of veterans, and in my discussions with him, he's always... he's always commented that the one thing that he wishes he did as a young man was to join the military. But there's different ways to serve, and he chose to be a public servant, a first responder, and for that, I want to thank you for your service. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Talia Faro.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise in support of this resolution. And let me first say, I thank my colleague Alderman Brian Hopkins for submitting this resolution to honor our good friend Alderman Nick Spisato. Nick was my Alderman. I didn't complain much, but I saw his commitment to not only the ward, but his commitment to the police and fire throughout this city. I met Nick at the 25th District's police party, their Christmas party, and I sat beside him, and that was my first time meeting him. We had an extensive conversation about running for Alderman, and that's when it first popped in my mind to consider running for Alderman. And because of Nick, I thank him for every headache I get, I thank him for the stress that I have. But Nick has become a really good friend over the past few years. He's been a great mentor, and he's been a really good friend. And I think it's obvious to everyone the special relationship that Nick and I share, so much so that Nick bought a Buick Enclave, and I went and bought a Buick Enclave. Nick renewed his lease for a newer Buick Enclave, and because I had a different color, I went and got the same color as Nick. I say that jokingly, but Nick, I want to congratulate you on your years of service. It is true, but not for that reason. But I say this because, Nick, I want to congratulate you on your many years of service to the city, not only as a fireman, but your continued service as an Alderman. You're one person that doesn't let anything hold you back, and I take that from you and I learn from that. You've not let any disabilities that you've encountered stop you from fighting the good fight, and so I think all of us can take that lesson with us as we continue in our service to the city. Thank you, Madam President.
So I too am going to join the body, and I'm sorry, Alderman Nugent.
Sorry, Nick, I know you said no.
Don't be shy when you want to raise your hands, folks.
I also rise in support of this resolution. Nick is literally my right-hand man here in council. He is also the glue of the Northwest Side. He is such a fierce advocate for police, fire, first responders. I'm so lucky to serve with you up here. Thank you for all your service. Thank you.
So I will violate the rule briefly, and really mostly just to say thank you. We really didn't know each other eight months ago, but you have been a constant source of great counsel and support, and I appreciate it. I also want to say thank you for not only your years of service to the Fire Department, but also your service to the community. You're a member of a number of different boards and councils. You care passionately, not only about your community, but the city at large, and we are really honored by your presence with us as part of this body, and we look forward to continued years of service. So congratulations to you and your family for everything that you've done for our city. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to close, this resolution was precipitated by the simple act of filling out some paperwork that firefighter Spisato filled out in November last year to retire, but as was stated during the photo op this morning, the firemen all know there's no such thing as a former firefighter. When you take that oath to serve and protect, it is an oath for life, and despite the fact that the paperwork now says he's retired, he is a firefighter and always will be a firefighter. And the brotherhood and sisterhood of the firefighters that were there today wanted to make that perfectly clear. And I also wanted to thank everyone for their kind remarks and their participation during the ceremony today. And with that, Madam President, I would move passage of the resolution in the omnibus.
There are no objections, so ordered. Congratulations, Nick. Committee on Special Events, Chairman Spisato.
All right. Good thing I didn't have to sign my own resolution, because I'm the hardest signature to get over here, so. But thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council, reporting for your committee on special events, cultural affairs, and recreation, which held a meeting on Wednesday, January 8th, 2020. The committee recommends passes of the following seven items. Item number one, appointments as members of Advisory Council and Cultural Affairs and Special Events, 14 people for the expiring October 5th, 2021, 15 people expiring October 5th, 2022. Item number two, City of Chicago Special Events Ordinance for 2020, which is the authority relating to the management and execution of events, and also to vest the Commissioner with contracting authority to functioning of D case. Item number three, Amendment of Municipal Code Section 10-835 regarding time requirements for outdoor special events permit applications. Item number four, Amendment of Special Code Chapter 2-28 regarding new Article 2 Public Art Program. Item number five, expenditure of open space impact fees with Neighborhood Space and Near-North Unity Program for floating boardwalk and life habitat between Weed Street and Eastman Street along the north branch of the Chicago River. Item number six, expenditure of open space impact fee funds providing 20% match to IDOT grant for studying, I'm just reminding to say, a study, the Chicago River Trail and access improvements. Item number seven, and final item, the expenditure of open space impact fee funds to the Chicago Department of Transportation for the south branch of Chicago River and Bubbly Creek Access Study among communities of Bridgeport, Lower West Side, and three parks along the waterway. I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call of the Committee of Finance and Associated Unsuccessful Motion.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, Chairman Tunney.
Thank you, Madam President, and I have three reports, and two of them are cannabis-related. So what I want to do is get through the first report, and if people want to speak, which is some cleanup language about cannabis, but I did notice, not in our committee, but also over the last six months, there's a lot of anguish and angst about cannabis, and I'm certainly listening to all the frustration and know that there's a lot of work to be done in Springfield. So with that, I'm going to start with the first report, which is the Committee on Zoning Landmarks, Madam President and members of the council. Series of reports for your committee zoning, on zoning landmarks and building standards for which a meeting was held on January 14th. As I said, these reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed with the majority of members present. Page one contains the Amendment of Municipal Code Chapters 17-3, 17-4, 17-14, and 17-17 by modifying cannabis-related zoning provisions. I hereby move these passage of the aside and by the last most favorable roll call of the Finance Committee report and the associated motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Page one contains the reappointment of our friend Sam Toya as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I hereby move passage of this item by the same motion, if there's no objection.
There are no objections, so ordered.
No objection, okay. All right, let's move on. Page one contains the appointment of Suellen M. Burns as a member of the Commission on Chicago Landmarks. I hereby move passage of this item by the same motion, if there is no objection.
There are no objections, so ordered.
So page one also includes, page one through 11, I'm sorry, contains various map amendments in the 47th, 44th, 43rd, 37th, 36th, 33rd, 32nd, 30th, 27th, 26th, 25th, 22nd, 18th, 16th, 14th, 12th, 11th, 5th, 4th, 2nd, and 1st Wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion, if there is no objection.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Page 11 contains various large signs over 100 square feet in area, 24 feet above grade in the 45th, 44th, 42nd, 32nd, 27th, and 2nd Wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion, if there is no objection.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Page 11 contains one fee waiver for a historical landmark in the 2nd Ward. I hereby move passage of this item by the same motion, if there is no objection.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Page 11 contains the historical landmark designation for the John Newveen House located at 3916 North Tripp Avenue in the 45th Ward. I hereby move passage of this item by the same motion, if there is no objection.
There are no objections, so ordered.
All right, on the second report, the City Council presented a report on your committee on zoning landmarks and building standards for which a meeting was held on November 19th. Following item was passed by a majority of members present. This item is in the 30th Ward. It's one map amendment located at 3214 through 16 North Karlov Avenue. I move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee report and associated motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
All right. Now, Madam President and members of the City Council presented a report for your committee on zoning landmarks and building standards for which a meeting was held on December 10th. The following item was passed, by the way, in the 44th Ward by a majority of the members present. Page one contains the map amendment located at 3524 North Clark Street. I hereby move passage, well, I hereby move passage of the item by the last most favorable roll call vote. However, I know that I believe my colleague Jason Urban would like to say a few words at this time.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Urban.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, we are, this issue around cannabis dispensaries in the city of Chicago, we are still in the same space, and again, we, as I said earlier, we need not turn into a circular firing squad, pitting ourselves one against another. We know that Alderman Tunney has done the necessary work in his community around this issue, and again, we need to all be aiming in the same direction on this issue. We definitely have concerns, not just us as the African-American caucus, Automotive Caucus, but also others as relates to the consumption and other issues, and I don't think we need to be fighting ourselves on this, but focus our energies on trying to make the changes needed down in Springfield on this, and we stand together on this, so let's not hold our brother hostage here, but move forward and work in on trying to find some solutions in Springfield, because that is where the action needs to go for us, and I think we need to support him in this as a representative of his local community. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you. I want to thank Chairman Tunney for definitely reaching out, but his, even if, whether he reaches out or not, which he always does, and someone said it earlier, I think one of our colleagues, his humility and his humbleness, and I appreciate him for that, but I also know he works in collaboration on all ends. I just, I wasn't, because we had a couple of committees going on, I was in and out. Do we have the breakdown of their social equity piece? Because in order for them to get it, they had to have some social equity compliance, and I want to know if we have that, what that was, whether it was, whether they hired bartenders or whether they hired managers, just so I'll know it for my records, because I wasn't able to ask the question in committee.
I had a lot of time, but there is a commitment by Crescort, obviously, to work on the social equity and not just employees, in terms of ownership and development, so that minority partners can have the ability to be successful. And I know that they have reached out to certain members of the caucus to make sure that they're on record to improve the lot for every Chicagoan.
Thank you, Alderman Tunney.
Got it, I got it.
Chairman Tunney.
Okay, so with that, if there's no other, I moved hereby passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee report and the associated motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report. Thank you, and thank you, colleagues.
Matters on the agreed calendar, Alderman Harris.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
This is a good time to suspend the rules for a resolution that I've been waiting three and a half hours to introduce and to the body, something very important and dear to my heart. A couple of residents from my community are here. I know after long hours, but I won't take 10 minutes.
Can I suggest this, that rather than read every single resolution and then have people speak to it, that we, the sponsors speak briefly, and that we will have the resolutions read into the record, entered into the record at a later time?
Brief, and I called dibs on the first resolution.
All right. Alderman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I received from Clerk Anna Valencia a total of 77 items proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, tributary resolutions for the following Aldermen: Hopkins, Dow, Hairston, Sawyer, Mitchell, Thompson, Alderman Cardenas, Quinn, Burke, Lopez, Coleman, Brinkin, Scott, Austin, Nugent, Alderman Napolitano, Riley Smith, Gardner, That concludes the agreed calendar.
Are you asking for?
We moved it, we adopt them in the omnibus.
There are no objections, so ordered. Alderman Cardenas, do you wish to speak on your resolution?
Yes, Madam President. I'm not sure if the clerk's going to read the resolution or just may speak on it.
I'm asking you just to speak on it, given the lateness of the hour and the fact that we have four other resolutions.
I totally understand the hour, and obviously, I appreciate your indulgence and your patience in this. There's a couple of young people that are here, Glenn and Christine Young, if you can stand up. They've been in my community for over seven years. They met, they were neighbors, they got married, and they stayed in the community, and they've been just a really phenomenal presence in McKinley Park. If you want to know about CAPS, come and talk to these two young phenomenal people, because they've been doing it for 26 years. They are retiring. Everything you know about the program, they can talk about it from its inception to how it turns out right now, and how it's really, over the years, has been transformed and progressed. A few of us here know this couple. There's nothing to say except McKinley Park would not be McKinley Park if it wasn't for these two individuals, Glenn and Christine, especially Christine, she's the one that sort of leads the two, but I want to just, you know, hear, for me, such a warm reception and applause for them, because they've been, you know, such a strong presence. McKinley Park is 49 out of 77 in terms of safety. Think about that, 49 out of 77 in safety, which means the highest is the safest, and it would not be, if it was not for them, the highest attendance in CAPS meetings they owned in the 9th District. 9th District's a huge district, and month after month, the highest presence of people there and attendance, they have it, and I just want to mention, I don't know what else to do, because you guys have been waiting for three and a half hours. You guys are so phenomenal, please, thank you for your work, 26 years. Not sure if Alderman Patrick Thompson wants to speak. Madam President, to close, I would like a picture with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Cardenas. The Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner, and I'd ask the same, that I know you want to speak to a resolution honoring the teachers of upbeat music and arts.
Yes. On November 19th, every-
On November 19th, I received a phone call from somebody telling me that a police officer had been shot in my ward. I got into my vehicle, and I drove to the scene and to see what happened, and long story short on it, was that somebody had robbed a bank, and there was a high-speed pursuit after the criminal. And finding out that the, that the police officer had a grazed wound to the head, the mayor actually showed up, and we checked on the officer. But little did I know that actually what transpired there was five teachers who were very heroic when the criminal actually barged into a school, music school, running from the police with a loaded gun after he was done shooting a police officer. And five teachers, instead of fleeing themselves or looking out after their own safety, actually helped hide and keep seven other students safe. Unfortunately, during that matter, there was, there was another innocent child shot, and the mayor was with me that night as well when we visited that student. I just wanted to recognize these teachers for how brave and bold they were to actually put their own safety to the side and look out after, after these students. You are, as a teacher, you exemplify everything that is good in teaching, and you are brave and you are bold, and I want you to be recognized for your actions. I thank you very much from the bottom of my heart, as a council and as a city. We thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitz, who wants to speak to a resolution honoring Dr. King's life and legacy today, his birthday, which would have been, I think, his 91st birthday.
Thank you, Madam President. I thought it would be very fitting that we would acknowledge that on the City Council today. So on today, January 15th, 1929, is the iconic of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., the Atlantic Baptist ministers whose powerful prophetic words, activism, and action changed both the United States and the world was born. Had he lived, he would have turned 91 this year. He was just 39 years old when he was assassinated on April 4th of 1968. The birth of this humble transformative global freedom fighters, religious and civil rights leaders, and social justice giants is deservedly celebrated by millions of people across the country and throughout the world. His life, work, and nonviolence philosophy has been honored with the Nobel Prize, a national holiday, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, now celebrated by all 50 states. Further, schools, public buildings, and streets across the U.S. are named after him, including a memorial on Independence Mall in Washington, D.C. Throughout my life, I have been profoundly inspired by Dr. King's hard work, his civil rights, economic and social justice victories, as I work for my constituents as an Alderman. As I join Chicago and the nation in remembering, honoring, and celebrating this great man's commitment, inspired life, work, and legacy on his birthday this week, I believe everyone can pay tribute to his memories by doing their part in some way to make a positive difference in their neighborhood, this great city, and the world that we live in. Madam Chairman, Dr. King's dreams states that he's went to the mountaintop, and he looked over and he saw the promised land. And in that dream today, we need to go and rise above and look and visualize all the things that he fought for, and what makes this world a great world, what brought the world together, and that's what's going to keep the world today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Mitz. And finally, Alderman Smith wants to speak to a resolution that she's going to be referring regarding the Federal Anti-Semitism Task Force.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I want to thank all my colleagues in City Council, Deb Silverstein and I, would like to thank all of you for your unanimous support of a resolution to help protect Jewish people. There have been unprecedented attacks on Jews in the United States in the past year. And we have been, Jews all over the country are feeling that never again is turning into again and again, and we don't want that to happen. So that is why we have created a resolution asking the FBI to create a special task force to help combat anti-Semitic crimes, and to send a message to the Trump administration that we all will not stand for this. And when these things occurred, and I said I would do this resolution a few weeks ago, I predicted, I said, I know that every member of City Council will support me, because in City Council, in this very, very diverse body, we have each other's backs, and we support each other, as I would for any of you, and we would all do for each other. So I wanted to express my gratitude to City Council and hope that we can pass this in our next Human Relations Committee meeting, and to know that our country will not put up with the kinds of activities that have been occurring to Jews, to non-Jews, to African-Americans, to gay people, to Latinos, and to immigrants, and that we stand strong together. Thank you, and I believe that Alderman Silverstein also wanted to make a brief comment on this.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Silverstein.
Thank you, Madam President, and I am very happy to be a co-sponsor with Alderman Smith on this. The 50th ward is home to the largest Orthodox Jewish community in the city of Chicago. Many of my constituents, including myself, have family and friends in New York and New Jersey where some of these anti-Semitic hate crimes took place, and they were horrific. When a hate crime occurs, it affects all of us, no matter what our religion is, and we must stand together to show that these acts of violence will not be tolerated, and instead of weakening us, it just strengthens us. I am proud that all of us here have signed on to this resolution. It makes me very proud, as Alderman Smith said, that we have all come together to stand together, and we must urge our President to take whatever steps are necessary to reduce these acts of hate throughout our country. Thank you so much.
The clerk will call the wards, beginning with the first.
Claims, free permits, license fee exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance; zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards; traffic regulations, traffic control signals, and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety; grants and privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way; and exemptions from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access to parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Hopkins has proposed ordinance for amendment of an ordinance concerning bird collision deterrents lead pilot credit, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Hopkins and Alderman Lopez have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 7-12-365, concerning filing of coyote incident reports, which is referred to Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Alderman Dowell has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Leon Leaderman Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Dowell also has a proposed order for the issuance of a permit for a signed sign board at 1212 South Indiana Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman King has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 9-64-206, by modifying parking meter hours of operation at various locations within the 31st ward, which is referred to Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alderman Cardenas has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 10-8-355, to regulate recycling and composting of waste and outdoor special events, which is referred to Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Alderman Cardenas also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, chapter 11-4, Article 23, to prohibit single-use plastic carryout bags and polystyrene containers, which is referred to Committee on Energy and Environmental Protection. Alderman Cardenas and others have proposed a resolution to call for informational hearings on environmental and health impacts of planned manufacturing districts, which is referred to Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Alderman Secho Lopez has proposed ordinance for opening of public ways in the area bounded by West 16th Street, South LaSalle Street, West Surmac Road, and South Archer Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Burnett has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed sign boards, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Wagaspak has proposed ordinance for approval of a Plata Vienna resubdivision, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way, and proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed sign boards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez and Alderman Martin have proposed a resolution to call for opposition to U.S. military attacks in Iran and the increased military engagement in Iraq, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Viegas has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 4-60-023, to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portions of North Austin Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Vasquez has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 9-64-170A, to allow parking of taxicabs on residential streets within the 40th ward, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Napolitano has a proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed sign boards at 10801 West Irving Park Road, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Riley has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 2-100-110, regarding police powers for designated city employees within section 1028-095 of the municipal code, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Riley also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 4-60-023, to disallow additional packaged goods licenses on portions of various public ways, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Riley also has a proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Roy L. Bill Frakes Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Smith and Alderman Tunnie have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 9-64-090, by creating non-for-profit organization one-day residential parking daily permit pilot program, which is referred to Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alderman Smith, Alderman Tunnie, and Alderman Riley have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 4-60-130, to further regulate hours of operation for sale of alcoholic liquor in taverns holding retail establishment licenses, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Smith and others have proposed a resolution to call on President Donald Trump to form a special FBI task force addressing the increase in hate crimes against people of Jewish faith, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Tunnie has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 4-60-022, to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portions of North Clark Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Tunnie also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed sign boards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Martin and others have proposed a resolution to call for declaration of state of climate emergency and initiate, initiation of emergency climate mobilization efforts, which is referred to Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. And Alderman Wagaspak and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Title VII, by adding a new chapter, 7-60, entitled Plastic-Free Water Ordinance, which is referred to Committee on Finance.
Alderman Mitchell for approval of the Journal?
I am not aware of any corrections to the Journal move that to be approved.
All those in favor approving the Journal is corrected signify, approving the Journal signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion is carried. Unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell?
Madam President, I'm not aware of any unfinished business.
Miscellaneous business?
Madam President, I'm not aware of any miscellaneous business.
Date and time of the next meeting?
I've handed up an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and the time for the next meeting.
Mr. Clerk?
Alderman Mitchell has an ordinance setting the date and time of the next meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago for Wednesday, February 19th, 2020, at 10:00 a.m. in the City Council Chamber and City Hall.
Alderman Mitchell asked to?
I move passes in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Roll call on the omnibus?
Alderman Lisparra, Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Dowell, Alderman King, Alderman Harriston, Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Mitchell, Alderman Harris, Alderman Beal, Alderman Silaski Garza, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Cardenas, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Coleman, Alderman Moore, Alderman Curtis, Alderman O'Shea, Alderman Taylor, Alderman Brookins, Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Tabarez, Alderman Scott, Alderman Secho Lopez, Alderman Maldonado, Alderman Burnett, Alderman Irvin, Alderman Telefiero, Alderman Raboyes, Alderman Cardona, Alderman Wagaspak, Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez, Alderman Austin, Alderman Ramirez Rosa, Alderman Viegas, Alderman Mitz, Alderman Spazato, Alderman Nugent, Alderman Vasquez, Alderman Napolitano, Alderman Riley, Alderman Smith, Alderman Tunnie, Alderman Gardner, Alderman Kapelman, Alderman Martin, Alderman Osterman, Alderman Haddon, and Alderman Silverstein.
The ayes are 50, the zeros are nay. Alderman Thompson?
Motion to reconsider each and every vote.
All those in favor of the motion to reconsider each and every vote, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
No.
The motion fails. Is there a motion to adjourn, Alderman Mitchell?
And no further business. Before the body, I move that we adjourn.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Thank you all.
This was a long one, ma'am.